...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Boss?
Present.
Pipia?
Present.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Stroller?
Here.
Ron?
Present.
Barnes?
Present.
Cor. All right, the first item we have are the approval of minutes. I just have one on page five that "for profit" should be hyphenated, that's all I got. Does anybody have anything else for amendments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Page three, it's page two of six of the minutes.
Okay.
On, under number nine, it's that next to last sentence, and I think we ought to remove that from work with other neighbors, the rest of that. And I think that what you said, Mayor, was the consensus is to do more research on water and sewer and figure out what is needed to bring to the next council meeting.
That's what the motion was?
No, the consensus.
Consensus, I mean, yeah. The consensus was to... Say that again?
To do more research on water and sewer lines is what we were talking about, to figure out what is needed to bring to the next meeting. And then this second one.
Are you saying instead of that sentence, council discussed gate options and the areas to... You want to pull that?
The consensus is to, and then pull the rest of that sentence.
The last sentence?
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, what else?
And then on page 5 of 6, under number 2, under appointments, the approval, let's see, seconded on that first line, seconded, Chief Ackerman's request.
Seconded approval of Chief Ackerman's request, of Chief Ackerman's request to increase the weight of Joe, so how he wanted to read it? Okay. I'm okay with that. Anything else?
No.
Did anyone else have any comments? So I would entertain a motion to, as amended, approve as amended?
Move to approve the minutes of the May 29, 2018 minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Oh, in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? A no. And just a reminder, in the minutes, we had discussed that the budget workshop would be Thursday, and subsequently, we found out that the planning commission meeting is Thursday, so they moved it to Wednesday at 5:15. So everybody has that on their calendar?
At the library.
At the library. So just wanted to re...
At the library.
Yeah, since the minutes don't say that. All right, the next item is public comments, and I see we have a large crowd, so that's good, we always have a large crowd at a council meeting. How many people desire to speak in public comments? Just one, okay?
Sharon, raise your hand.
Sharon, raise your hand, okay.
There's a third one.
Okay, well, we have three, so we can handle three. Okay, Sharon, do you want to go first? Oh, and you come, I should announce this, you come up to the podium, you give your name, your address, and your ward, and you have five minutes to share.
Great.
Thanks, Sharon.
Okay, Sharon Kissinger, 1103 Elm Street, Ward 4. Is that it? Was that it?
That's it, you got it covered.
I just wanted to say that I came to the council meeting two weeks ago, and I heard...
Oh, you can't, wait one second. You can't hear us? Can you?
I couldn't hear much when I was sitting over there.
They're off.
Do you...
Nope. Now they're off. Now they're off.
Can't hit them.
Yeah, can't hit them. You have to just...
We'll resync here.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
They can hear us.
Can you hear us?
Sitting over there, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
All right. We'll wait for Austin to return, maybe?
Maybe I'm not coming back.
Well, you know, after, I guess. We prefer you to come back. Okay, Sharon, you're up.
I just wanted to say that when Joe Cohorst was here a couple of weeks ago, talking about how we really need to do something to improve our town, bring more people in...
At night?
Bring young people. And then I left the meeting, and later I read in the paper that Kyle Gorki came and was offering a way to do just that. And I think we're just crazy if we don't take this gift that he's offering to us and go with it. I've talked to people in Emporia today, and it's not just bigger towns, all the smaller towns around Emporia have disc golf courses, and their golf clubs allows them to use that with portable or things that can be taken down when they have tournaments. Well, anyway, I'm sure Kyle is going to make a great presentation. I just wanted to say that I am 100 percent behind this project.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
There's a gentleman in the middle section here. Did someone raise their hand?
Brandon Wilson, 10th and Anne, and I don't know what my ward is, so I don't know if that's significant or not.
Ward 2.
Ward 2?
2.
Who are my representatives? Okay, that's good to know.
10th and Anne, okay.
I'm assuming a lot of the concerns that are going around are about safety. We could talk about leveraging and, you know, keeping youngsters here. I think everybody probably understands that part of it, and that's probably the slam dunk of the project. You know, the safety issue, I've had stitches twice when I was younger playing in a park. One's falling off of a slippery slide, and the other one on a swing set. And it's okay. It's okay, it happens. Right now, I have a fractured elbow and two sprained wrists, and that's from bicycle accident, and it's okay. But I think, you know, every day when I come home from work, I drive by Dargets Park, and I see that there's two small baseball fields there. And when I drive by that park, I know that activity's going on, and I know, I assume the risk driving by that park that I could catch a stray ball, and I assume folks who are playing in the park, you know, in other areas assume that risk too, and they recognize that. So I think, I think the city's set a precedent for, you know, multi-uses within parks, and Dargets Park is a prime example of where something potentially could go wrong, but won't necessarily go wrong. And I think probably that would be an example of something that's more risky than disc golf, if you think about it, the way the ball fields are positioned. So I would urge you to consider precedent and, you know, the actual true risk, which probably really isn't that great. I don't have any stats on how many kids get hurt in your parks every year due to baseballs and falling off of swing sets, but I would assume that probably that risk would be a lot greater than catching a stray disc. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Vicki's next.
Didn't get long-winded. My name is Vicki Gross, 301 Carolina, Ward 3. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I miss you guys. I'm here to address the disc golf. I think it's a fabulous idea. I'm all for getting the kids out in the fresh air, getting away from the computer screens, get them to a park or a field where they can play so that they get good habits and they don't grow up to be a fatter woman like me. So I think it's a good idea, but I object to putting it in City Park. City Park is a place where people go on their lunch hours for serenity. They don't go there to watch somebody play golf. I think a mixed use, that's a good idea. The City Park is a mixed use. The swimming pool's there. We just had a meet this past week, weekend. The tennis courts are there, and the school uses both, the pool for class and the tennis courts, so it is a mixed-use park. But I think putting this golf game in the park would be like letting people go to the golf course and use the golf course just to walk around and walk their dogs. I don't think it's a good mixed use. I think it's a good idea. We have a complex called Lakeview Sports Complex. I've been driving through that complex, I've been driving through City Park, comparing what they both have to offer for something like this. And the City Park, of course, has lovely shade. Those trees are, what, 100 years old at least? But it's also our black squirrel habitat. That's where you find them most, that's where we put our plaques, so people can come down and read about them and then see them there in the trees. They're shy little animals. You get people walking through there throwing discs. They're afraid of anything that flies, because that's their predators, anything that bangs up against their trees. Throw the peanut at them, they'll look at you till you throw something at them, and then they run away. And I think that if this takes off as popular as it is purported to be, I think it should have a place of its own, or it should be in a sports complex where there's adequate parking, where there's a lot of little children running around. I go to the park and sit and watch, there's all kinds of people taking their little kids, their little toddlers, and they get to run around. You know, they don't have to be looking to see if something's being thrown, you know? I think it's an excellent idea, but it shouldn't be in the City Park. Our travel and tourism has spent a lot of money promoting the black squirrel to make us the black squirrel city, and I don't think we should do anything to jeopardize the breeding ground or the habitat where those squirrels live. You talked about having trees. I went up to Lakeview, there's a lot of trees up there. In fact, two of the baskets are set among a cluster of trees. It's shady, but I suppose that's there to be like a sand trap or something, making it more difficult hole to play. But if you don't like, that's not a regulation course, so people aren't using it, I suppose, like they should or would. But I don't know who put that up there. If it was homemade, like it said in the newspaper, then change it. Talk to whoever put it up there and just say, "We want to make it regulation. We want to set these baskets at the right approximation to one another, the right distances, and make it a good regulation course." There's plenty of room up there. Water, there's not water fountains there, but there's not at the tennis courts either, and I haven't heard anybody complain about that. But everybody takes their own water now. Bathrooms, they could make arrangements to, if they're going to play regularly, then tell Brian Frogel, and he can go up and unlock the bathrooms right there at the sports complex. Anyway, I think it's a good idea. I just think using the City Park, it would be an inappropriate purpose, an inappropriate place for people to play this kind of an active game in the park when so many people use it for relaxation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, you're my last one. I asked before. No, I asked before.
This is my first time, I didn't know how it worked.
Okay, because there's only so much time we're going to allocate to public comments. I ask how many people want to talk?
You did miss that guy's hand.
Yeah, I think he had his hand low.
And the beer.
Excuse me?
I'll be quick. You looked away right. My name's Chase Williams. Just moved here, it's 5:10 North 13th. And so I don't know what ward that's in, being new, but I don't know if someone does. Fifth? Okay, so I guess we're in the fifth ward.
First.
Sorry, first. Just want to make a few comments. I just graduated dental school, and I looked at a lot of different communities to move to. And one of the main reasons why we chose Marysville outside of the great dental practice that I joined is we saw how progressive Marysville was. We heard, you know, this is a $20 million renovation of the high school, there's a $4 million pool going in. And as a young family with a young one-and-a-half-year-old at home, we're so excited to hear about these things, to hear about cities and small towns that are willing to invest into the future and to listen to us. And that was one of the main reasons why we came here. And I think the disc golf course at City Park would be a great idea. Where we moved from was Cameron, Missouri, just two hours straight east on 36. The City Park is almost a shot-for-shot of what Cameron's Park is. They have volleyball courts down there, tennis courts down there, they have the pool down there. The golf course is just across the street, and it's such a cool experience when they put that golf course in there, that disc golf course, it just flourished the community. You have people coming from all different age groups to enjoy the pools, to enjoy the disc golf, to sit there, people would be reading books while people were playing disc golf around them. And I know there's this, there's this envision that there's going to be 1,000 discs flying. It's like golf, you know, you can be at a popular golf course, people aren't playing golf 24/7. It's not going to be people are there all the time. I think it will be used well, but it's not a game where you're throwing the disc 1,000 times. It's just a nine-hole course. So I think that it is going to be a good idea, and I really do hope that it does get passed. I know there's a lot of people, especially my age and with young families, when we first had our son, we were able to take him, when he's four months old, in the stroller and go play disc golf and walk together. I'm not a big fan, I'm not a runner, I don't enjoy walking on trails that much, but I really did enjoy, take my wife and my son, and I never once felt like he was in danger playing disc golf. And we had a lot of other couples that would join us in that activity, and it was a lot of fun. And it was something where you can still be competitive and do that. And I just do want to commend Kyle that he did bring a professional disc golf designer in to come design this course. I'm an avid sports fan, I really do enjoy the sport. I've looked at that other, those other spots. Personally, I don't think it'd be fun to, you know, throw it down a field back and forth with just one or two trees. I think the city course would offer a safe environment and a fun environment to play the sport. That's just my opinion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You will be the last.
I'll be real quick.
Okay. I was trying to judge my time in public comments, and that's why I ask at the beginning.
Sure, sure, I guess I shot it up too quick. Tony Montiel, 1309 Walnut Street, I believe that's Ward 4. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, I know Kyle's going to cover a bunch of stuff that a lot of us are stressing on. Moved here from Kansas City just two years ago, born and raised down the street from Rosedale Golf Course, Disc Golf Course, rather. It is a City Park, has a disc golf course that's been wrapped around it for 35 years now, has baseball diamonds, soccer fields, skateboard park, which they just put that in, I can't speak on that. But anyway, it's been there for a long time, and I've been playing disc golf for roughly 16 years now. This is a huge sport that I grew up with, my parents still live right on the street from here. I've played several, I couldn't even tell you how many courses over these 16 years. Most of them are around City Parks and are incorporated, and it'd just be unbelievable to see how people get along. So another thing I wanted to say on safety is, disc golf is not just a sport that's dodgeball and people are trying to hit each other with these things. There are rules in place, just like real golf. So basically, you know, you get up there, and there are signage, you know, which the one down there at Lakeview, it lacks. There's no pads, there's no signage. If you've never played there before, you don't know where to go, where's hole one? And that's what causes injuries in this sport, is the lack of communication and discs flying in different directions. To have a professional come in and say, "This is the proper way to do it. This is how far certain holes need to be from where playgrounds are, from where roads are, from where buildings and private property are." And he did that. He, I mean, I've looked over it over and over, and, I mean, it is mapped out just the way it should be. And with these rules and etiquette in place, that's what makes this sport way safer than what it seems to be. You know, it isn't just a thing where people get up and they're throwing these discs around. There's a big part of it where you get up to it, and based on your ability, you decide whether if there's someone walking down the way, you're not just going to hail into them and yell "for," you know? I mean, you're going to see someone and wait for them to pass if they're in any position. Now, like we were going to talk about, some people can throw it really far, you know, and it's probably going to be more accurate. Whether you're not or you are, you're just not going to be able to throw it that far. If you're a beginner, it's going to go from here to the back, you know? So it's a relative sport, and I'm going to leave it there, because I know Kyle's going to have a lot of good points, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we will move along to business and discussion items, and Kyle, you are Before you start, I just have a, I won't include this in your time, but, you know, I had assumed that you had read this Infinite Disc official blog that was in the packet last time. Did you have a chance to read that?
I did not, no.
Okay, I'm going to give this to you, so you have it. I think I didn't realize that you don't get the agenda packet, so you don't know what I'm referring to, so I thought that was...
Yeah, would I be able to present some paperwork for you all as well?
Okay, well, right now, I'm talking, right? And the other thing is that, so, just, oh, I should ask you, did you get the information that was in the packet this time? Did you see it?
I've read over a little bit of it, yes.
Do you want the whole packet, so you have that as well?
I would sure like that, thank you.
Okay. And just to make sure we understand, from the last two meetings, what was your takeaway from the council? What was our concern? So we know we're on the same page starting tonight.
Safety in a multi-use area.
Correct.
That's what I can gather.
Great, great. Okay, so, so how many council meetings have you been to?
This would be my third one.
Okay, so you've never looked at, you've never been involved with the city council before?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so when we, we each week, each meeting, we have things that we know nothing about. I mean, every meeting, there's something new that we have to do research, and we have to vote on it. So we go do research, or some of us do, and go do research, and then we have to rely on that when we vote. So I did research, and my research was from the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism. Now, would you think that's a legitimate website?
Yeah, I would.
Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism. Okay, so I'm going to give this to you, one more thing. Get your exerciser, not my, from the golf course, so I'm going to give it to you.
I don't have your golf proponent.
Okay, okay, so what's on the second page in the middle of that? What does it say?
Where are we at here, five acres?
Five acres. So the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism told me that our City Park was five acres, so that's what I used.
Understood.
And that, doesn't that make sense? I mean, I didn't just pull off, I mean, Kansas Department of Wildlife. So I just wanted you to know where my reference point was. I don't have this deer thing you have or anything like that, but I wanted you to know that I didn't just pull a number out.
Understood.
I went to a reference point that I thought was legitimate and used that number.
Can I, can I cross-reference with, I've used an acreage plotting map that says that the entire park is 11.53 acres, and if you remove the tennis court, if you remove the pools, as well as the playground area, the entire, the entire City Park is 8.32 acres, I believe?
Okay, but I didn't have that.
Is what it is?
I didn't have that. So you understand when I said that I, excuse me, if there's any comments, you need to leave, because I'm having a discussion with Kyle right now. So I just wanted you to know my reference point. So, you know, I just would appreciate that if you question my information, to understand that I will do research and that I'm not just going to pull a number, I'm just going to guess. I tried to find research to get the five-acre number.
Is there a plat map available of the City Park?
Yes, there is. She's just saying that, she's just clarifying where she got her number from.
Understood, yeah. And that's where I wanted to be able to say that I've done research as well.
Okay, so this, excuse me, so this was the design that we have only seen, the council has seen?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you have a professional disc golf designer design this?
Yes, I did.
And what's his name?
His name is Dennis Voschulz.
Is he here?
He is not actually present, he's from Harrington, Kansas, but he has designed these parks, Father Padilla Park in Harrington, Kansas, the City of Lawrence Centennial Park, the City of Baldwin.
Now, is he, does he own that golf, disc golf?
Disc Unlimited, yes.
But is he actually on that website of Disc Golf Course Designers.org?
I...
Is he a professional disc golf course designer?
Yes, I would say that he is based on this information, a professional disc golf designer.
Because I went on the list, I went to that website, again, my research, I went to the website, and I did not see that name or anyone that's in Harrington at that website to be an accredited disc golf course designer.
Okay.
He might own a business that sells discs, but I didn't see that he was an accredited designer.
I'm attempting to read to you all the cities that he has planned disc golf courses for.
Well, that's one point, but I'm just saying that, and my last point, and then I will let you talk.
You're fine.
Your time has not started. But, so, this, this course here, did you tell people that this was in accordance with the design principles and safety distances on this website?
I have not, no.
Not on your Facebook page?
It's, it is within the 8.53 acres of what the City Park would be, and I don't think there's any specific design of how far baskets have to be.
Well, I think someone, I think someone specifically asked you, did you design your course based on this website?
And we took into account any mixed areas that we would be avoiding, such as the playground, you know, picnic areas.
Okay, well, I'll give this to you.
That's fine.
Last thing I'll give in you. And when it says "design principles" there, the third one, it says holes, this is their design principles, it says holes are not planned, crossing cycleways, pathways, or roads, right?
That's what it says.
And your answer was yes. And this one does. It crosses roads and pathways.
I was using the park availability that was there.
But they specifically asked you if this course met this design criteria, and you said yes.
I said that I had planned it according to that, based on the amount of space that we had available.
So the key thing is that we, as a city, are responsible for everyone within the city for their safety, not just disc golf people. But if you wanted to build a disc golf course and you wanted to buy however many acres you wanted to outside the city, we'd say knock yourself out, go for it, and we would not be involved at all. We would encourage it, you know, that would be great. You could buy property just right over the bridge, right beside City Park. But our point is that once you want to put something on city property, we have a responsibility to all of our residents to look at safety, and not just of the disc golfers, but the safety of the entire people that use the City Park.
Understood, and I feel like when we planned this course, we took that into consideration.
Well, can I just be really honest? If a designer designed this course, they would show me, it would be designed to scale, it would, this is what I would expect from a designer course. You would show me how it meets that criteria, how it's 15 feet away from all these structures, how many feet it is, where the out-of-bound markers are, how far it is to, from tee to basket. That's what I would expect from a professional designer, and I don't think that this was done by a professional designer, because it doesn't have any specifics for us to know what, that we would, that we could even tell that this was going to work in our park.
Is there any way that I could recall Mr. Voschulz to Marysville at a certain time to discuss this?
Well, only if he's on that approved list of designers, because when it becomes on city property, we can't just, so if we were going to design a school, or let's say a building, we couldn't, we wouldn't just pick someone who builds a building, we would get an architect. And we need to find an architect to plan a course if the city desires to proceed. That would be the right thing to do, is that we make sure that we do everything correctly.
Understood.
Now, it's your time. I just wanted to point out a few things from the last meeting, because you shared some things with residents that I didn't think were fair, and... things with residents that I don't think were fair, and I think it's important that we start on the solid ground that we do research, we're trying to learn about disc golf, our concerns are not ridiculous or ignorant. Some of the comments made, they're not. That is our responsibility as a city government.
Understood.
So, with that being said, we have your information that you have in here, and you have additional information?
Uh, yes.
Is there anything specific you wanna, I mean, I would expect this council to come in prepared and have read all the papers that you submitted. Is that true, council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they know everything you submitted. Now, do you have more?
Uh, yes.
All right.
I actually do.
Okay.
Here is a report that discusses...
Did you get a copy for everybody, or is that just one report?
Yes, yes. It's a report that discusses the damage to trees, and that any specific, the specific article that you brought up actually had been found false, that it was actually a tree disease that had killed the trees.
Are you talking about the one that we brought up?
They brought in a botanist, and basically said that it was, it was an oak disease that was killing the trees, not the disc golf, uh, not the discs itself. Just a second. The other one is a conversation that I've had with a gentleman from Dynamic Discs out of Emporia, Kansas. He's a course designer, and he actually states that there is a specific insurance policy that if we use Dynamic Discs, that their baskets, if we use their baskets specifically, there is an insurance policy that would cover the entire city park in the event of an accident. And that would be covered through Dynamic Discs, and that is one of the things that is basically brought up if there were any sort of accident, and that's one of the benefits of using their products.
And now, where are they based out of?
Emporia, Kansas.
Oh, are they the big one?
They are the big one, they're one of the big ones, yes.
Okay. And are they listed on that designer?
I'm sure they are. And they have looked over my course, and actually said that what they would do in order for that to fall under their insurance is that they would be able to take the rights of that design, which they basically said was fine, and that would fall under their insurance policy. They looked at the disc layout, everything like that, and said that this would fall under their policy. But they requested Mr. Voscholtz's and I's permission to take that under their, under their design, basically, and then bring it in-house and say, "yes," that they have done this, and it would fall under their insurance policy.
I'm trying to find this tree thing. Must, is that the same tree where we, they said they had lost 100 trees?
It's an oak, yeah, it was an oak disease. I also do have another question, since we were talking about research. Have any of you had a chance to call any of the city park administrators in the surrounding town that offered you to please call them and discuss?
I called, I called, based on your list today, I called Clay Center, and he didn't call me back, and I called, did I call Harrington? And I called Harrington, and they didn't call me back either.
Okay.
So, I did try to call those courses. I did notice that the one in Fairberry isn't in a city park, it's a side park, but the one in Clay Center...
It's in McNish Park, which is a block off of Highway 15.
Well, their city park is located at 422 Park Road.
Okay.
That's their main city park.
It is in the middle of town.
It is in the middle of town.
McNish is a block off of Highway 15, block west of Highway 15 on 12th Street. And that is actually a, if you break it down, they have three tee pads per hole, so they can actually have, and they have nine holes, so that equates to a 27-hole course by the time you play the different tee box.
Are you talking about the McNish one?
McNish, yes, that is correct.
You know, I didn't pull that, let's see if I did. Now, that's your, I did pull this disc golf review for the Father Padilla one.
Yes.
In Harrington, and they said it's mostly flat and moderately wooded, and they said it's a short but challenging course. But then the one in Clay Center, it said all the holes are very short, and then, I guess they have two in Clay Center?
I believe so.
One at Hunter, Huntress Park, and one, I was trying to get a hold of Dexter Park, and the one on Dexter Park said several holes are close to playground equipment, but the park is usually not busy.
Yes, that is correct. The pictures I've included in there show that there are multi-use areas in both of those parks, the Harrington, McNish, as well as Clay Center's park. I did not have time to get to Manhattan, to Fairmont Park, or Tuttle Creek Park below the dam.
Yeah, I went to that one.
And they actually are installing a new park, Disc Golf Park in Randolph, Kansas, which I have not had a chance to visit the site of that yet, and there's one actually north of Tuttle Creek, I think in Fancy Creek area, that they are installing. It's an 18-hole course, and I haven't looked at it yet. But, the point that I brought of why I showed these pictures of these multi-use areas is if you, many of these disc golf courses have been in these city parks with multi-use areas that are near playgrounds, that do cross roads, that do come in contact with other areas, and if it was a legitimate, legitimate concern that there was injuries happening at these parks, you can bet that they would pull these disc golf baskets in no time.
Well, some of that information that's in the Agenda this week, or this meeting, showed that they had to pull courses, they had to redesign courses based on injuries. And, you know, I think that the desire is to do a golf course where it's safe, the most safe location, where it'll be utilized, but where it's safe. You know, this Harrington one, it had 20 acres.
Yes, and...
That's a big park.
There's also a 10-acre pond on it.
Five acre.
Father Padilla Park.
Five acre.
And I can double-check that.
I pulled that up from the website.
That's fine, I can double-check that.
But...
But there is also two, or there is also a softball field that is considered part of Father Padilla Park as well. So, if you look at the usage of that park, as well as the...
When you did that calculation, did you take those, that criteria that I gave you, oh, that disc golf design, and did you take out that, when it said being 15 feet away from a walking trail, did you take that out? And when it said 45 feet away from a building, did you take that out?
As far as...
Determining what true acreage is available.
No, I did not.
Okay. Well, I would, you know, if, and that's why, what was his name?
And again...
What was his name, your designer?
These other parks do cross multi-use roads, sidewalks, playground areas, they do cross those things, so I don't...
But why would we want to do that if it's not the optimal course design? Why would we want, I mean, we are starting with a blank slate here, right? So, why wouldn't we want a designer to come in and make it as safe as possible from the front, get-go?
I, I mean, that's what I want as well.
Good, great.
But, will the city be willing to help me pay for the cost of, like, Dynamic Discs that charge $400 a hole to design it, or Inova?
Well, I think, from a city standpoint, I think that that would be dollars well spent.
Okay.
I mean, seriously, if, to have somebody come in and lay out the course in the safest manner for our community, I'm all for, I'm all in. I just want somebody who, when they, when, I want your course to say, not say, near a playground, and, you know, but not used very often, because our city park is used a lot. So, I don't have a problem if the city, you did all this work, and...
Yeah, I mentioned that.
You did all this work, but when you decide to put it on city property, then we have to take responsibility for it. So, at that point, I mean, we should do whatever money, pay whatever money, to make sure it's at the safest, best location. And it's not to discount what you've already done, it's just, once you move from your property to the city's property, then we have whole new levels...
And Mr. Froggen and I did go in on the cost to plan this, we went with the most cost-effective to us, based on the fact that we were knowingly putting it into city park and weren't sure that it would get approved. So, you know, if that's something that the city's willing to do, I can be on the phone with Inova tomorrow, and they can come plan it, however.
Inova, which what, Dynamic Discs is Emporia?
There's two, and they, so I would prefer going with Dynamic Discs, just based on the fact that they're out of Emporia, Kansas, and to keep it as local as possible. But, Inova is out of North Carolina, and they are a very large one as well. Dynamic Discs is an up-and-comer that is very large. They distribute to the entire United States, just like Inova, but I would prefer to keep it local, if I could.
Okay. Yes, darling?
Should we inform him that we take bids?
You mean for, to act, well, for the installation and the design and stuff, between the two, and one probably, the local guy would probably be a lot cheaper, but anyway, that's a good point. But, okay, so do you have anything else to present?
Um, just the fact, yes, that, I mean, I know that safety is a concern, you know, and I'm gonna preface all this with the fact that, you know, I played junior high football, I played high school football, I played collegiate football at Dome College, prior to transferring to K-State due to injuries, concussions, and so I don't want this to reflect negatively on football itself, but I think if we're concerned with injuries, the fact that the junior high football team practices on city property four days a week, a full-contact sport, you know, I think that that, the injury risk in that would pale, the city, the disc golf would pale in comparison to what a full-contact sport would be.
But can I point one point difference there, is that they are in a confined area, and they know the impact is coming, where if you're sitting, let's say you're walking the trail, and you have earphones in, and you have music going, and somebody yells "four," I'm not sure they're expecting a "four" when they're walking the trail. Do you see the difference?
Not really. I mean, it's a full-contact sport, like, I didn't expect to get hurt. I knew a hit was coming, and I still got hurt, multiple concussions. And that's, I've seen guys with their arms broken. In junior high, I watched a guy break his radius and ulna, in junior high. And according to the American Journal of Sports Medicine, youth football is the highest rated injury risk in the United States, followed by soccer, which I know that there's been soccer practices down there. The girls javelin, throw, the girls junior high throw javelin there, that's a giant speed.
I don't think we're aware of that.
They, they throw it there.
Well, maybe we need to discuss it.
And, no, 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 I don't, I don't think, I think you're missing my point here. I do not want to take any of this space away from junior high athletics. I played track, I threw javelin in high school. I loved it, I was good at throwing, that's why I was a quarterback in football, but I still got injured. People, they, people take the precautions all the time to have this, and things still happen. Like, you can, you take a risk every day walking out of your front door and getting into your vehicle. I mean, it's just inherent risks that you take. But, I don't want to bring junior high sports in a negative light. My point is that they're...
I'm worried about the javelin.
I mean, there's also softball practices that go on there, there's baseball practices in that little field. If you look, the CDC clearly says that drowning is the number-one cause of death in the United States as far as accidental. It's, 10 kids die a day, 10 people die a day, actually, and two of them are usually under the age of 14. Yet, we have, we have a park that has a pool. I mean, that's...
Well, praise the Lord, we haven't had a drowning.
Absolutely, that's the thing. I'm not advocating...
Is there something I need to add?
I'm not advocating that there be any sort of injuries, but I think that if we're looking at the activities that are already there, and comparing them with something that, you know, I could do research all day.
I know, and I could too. And I think that we're agreement that, you know, possibly, we could hire somebody.
And again, I have hired somebody, but if you would like a second opinion, I mean, it's gonna cost $400 per hole, not to plan nine holes. It's gonna cost a good chunk of change, and that's something that Mr. Froggen and I decided that we would go with this more cost-effective means of planning, with, again, a gentleman who's planned eight in the area, City of Lawrence, Beloit, Marion County, Rock Springs Ranch, and Thornfield, which is actually a private course in Kansas City, it's a private disc golf course.
There you go.
He's planned these. And so, we did go with a more cost-effective means to be able to bring...
And that makes sense, especially before you bring it to council.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
We knew that you all would be voting on this, and to, basically, we weren't sure what would happen, and that's why we went with this more cost-effective means, because I didn't personally want to go out of pocket $400 a hole to show up and have something similar to this design, because what happens if it does come back to similar to this design, and you still are on the fence about it?
Well, I think, I think if we have somebody who's, who is an accredited one, that can map it out, draw it to scale, show how they set, built-in all those safety measures as course designers go, then it'll give us a huge peace of mind.
And the insurance policy.
Yeah, well, I just, so, I was gonna let everyone get an option, offer to ask you questions, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Jason?
Uh, I don't have too many. I went and looked at the other sites the next morning.
I did, I did as well, per request.
Just to see, you know, in my opinion, the one southeast of the park is basically a drainage ditch. I don't see how, without a bulldozer and a lot of excavation work...
It's a ditch.
My other concern...
I looked down in there, and it's... My other concern on that would also be, is the city going to install a crosswalk there for patrons to cross, or run any sort of sewage or water systems to that to be able to provide amenities like restrooms or drinking? Because my big concern on that would be, you know, that's right where Highway 77 drops from 50 to 30, and I've seen trucks burning through there that are absolutely not going 30 miles an hour. You know, and if we're worried about liability, I know we brought up last time that there's a, there's a statute that says that municipalities cannot be sued based on, you know, activities in a public space, such as a park, unless someone can prove malfeasance or neglect. And in that case, if you had approved a course to cross 77 to reach a southeastern port, part of the city property, and someone got hit without a crosswalk, then that, I think, would probably be the very definition of malfeasance. So, you know, I did go look at all these other areas, and I think that, again, based on the optics of the city park, the, you know, availability of it, being able to access it, that this is, again, the best park for this activity, in my opinion, and the planner's opinion as well.
Anything else, Jason?
Uh, just, I mean, there was a case where somebody got hit with a disc, and the disc, I think they said it was designed, it had sharp edges on it. If they had any problems with that, they recalled discs. I mean, I'm sure that disc companies will push the boundaries as much, you know...
Um, these are, these are two examples of discs that I have brought in. This one is a mid-range driver, so it would be used for longer throws, and this is a putter. So, they're, you know, I can definitely hand them around if you want to see, you know, the flex.
Those are the same ones you had at...
Yeah, yeah, they're the same. Would anybody else care to see them?
You can pass them around.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And again, you know, that is a driver, as well as a putter, and, you know, I think that if you could...
Pass that one around.
I think if you look, that this would be just as flexible, if not more flexible, than a regular disc or a frisbee that's being thrown there any other time.
Who made that one?
This one is Inova. The people that, if you would like, can come design the course itself.
And who made these?
Champion, I think, is one, and...
Those are nice and soft.
Omega and...
Well, you know, one of the things that, um, we're saying...
Pass that one around also.
If you have a monitor, which we won't have a monitor. Okay.
I guess, I guess I'm... Sorry, go ahead.
We'll go around, and then you can finish, okay? Kev, do you have any questions?
Uh, you know, I've seen you did a lot of research too on it, and, you know, just as we have here on the council and stuff. And, you know, the park is, yeah, but I'm like, you know, some of them are, you know, is it the best place, you know? And I'd like to see, you know, a more specific plan drawn up. Yeah, I think the park would be a place for it. So, that's my, you know, where I'm going, so.
Diane, you have any questions?
Have you looked at Lyons Park at all?
Um, yeah, we, we did, and, and again, it just came down to the, the availability of the park, you know, people driving, you know, people that aren't from here, driving through and being able to see the, the course. Um, I think that it's just something that, it would take a lot of signage to, to be able to bring people's attention to other far-flung areas of the city, whereas, whereas Highway 77 and 36, you know, intersect right there, I think would be a, is probably the, the best place for it. And that's why the planner and I looked at all these other areas that were on city property to, to analyze.
It, this seemed like a normal, every time I wake up disc golf, I kept pulling up this website. Don't most people use this?
What is it?
It's Disc Course Review.
That, that's, that's like, that's, that's people who've played, that go on and put their, basically, they rate it.
Yeah, I guess, every time I pull up a disc golf course, this one pulls up.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's basically what people do, is go on and rate it and say, do they have concrete tee pads, do they not? Is, is the course mowed? Is it maintained? Is it not maintained? You know, are there facilities there, are there not? You know, and that's, that's what that is, is basically a public rating system based on, it would be like reviewing a business, basically.
Would you review it? I mean, who would do that?
Anybody who's gone to play the, the course.
It's not done by the same person all the time?
No. It's, it's a, it's a five-star rating, I believe, four-star rating, something like that, the course. And, and again, it's like public reviewing a business via Facebook.
It's got crowdsourced reviewing like...
Yes, crowdsourced, thank you.
Crowdsourcing is the term.
Thank you.
But Lyons Park is a very nice park, and it does have facilities, so I think it's something that may be, and I see here where there are many golf courses or putting them, you know, they put them on golf courses, so, I mean...
Yes, ma'am.
That, that might be an option too.
But, I mean, I, I think it's gonna come down to if it were in Lyons, if it were in Lyons Park, if it were in City Park. I, I think that, you know, 'cause there are multi-use areas up there. I guess I'm curious why Lyons Park is a better use of multi-use areas and not City Park. And, and forgive me, I don't know the acreage on Lyons Park. I can definitely look it up through the acres...
It's six acres.
Six acres total.
Somebody mapped it that I know, and they, that's what it shows, so...
Don't look at the Kansas Department of Wildlife.
And, and again, like, I guess, I guess my, my question would be, is, is why not have the optimal optics for, you know, passerby's, people coming through to town? It's super close to the downtown area to be able to, to go to... And that, and that's just a question, that's, why one multi-use area and not a, and not another? I guess it'd be my question. But, I mean...
Anything else, Diane?
No.
Todd?
Um, well, just kinda touching on that, I, my casual experience has been that Lyons Park probably gets as much traffic as City Park does, at least around the noon hours. I know when we walked the course here a couple weeks ago, we did it over the noon hour, which is probably, especially during construction right now, the busiest time, because they're all having lunch over there, and other people enjoy their lunches, et cetera. Um, but my question into that would be, you know, we walked, I think either the whole course or close to the whole course, with some admittedly crummy, crummy players, including myself. Um, and I don't think we had anything remotely close to a close call. I, I mean, I think it, it kinda goes back to the discussion of assumed risk, but would you say we had anything that was approaching dangerous?
No.
I mean, I know that's seven people or whatever on one day, but...
Yeah.
In a busy, a busy time of day, it just kinda, I think goes to show that if you can, you know, self-limit yourself, it's probably not that big of a deal. But, um, the other question I had, you said it would be, what, about $3,600 for, for, for a professional course playoff?
Yes, $400, and I priced it. I, you know, I priced it looking at Inova and, as well as Dynamic Discs, and both of their rates were $400 per hole, to, to fly someone out, drive someone here, have them walk through, plan it. And that's not even including the close to $6,000 I've raised from local businesses. That's another $4,000 on top of, of what this would be. And, and again, the only reason I went with this other gentleman who's planned this is cost-effectiveness out of pocket, knowing that this would go to a city park that may not happen, so...
If this were to move forward to the professional design stage, would your contributors still be on board?
Contribute, as far as...
As far as what you've already fundraised. So if we, if the city decided we wanted to spend $4,000 and get a pro in from Inova or Emporia to, to design the course?
Would the contributors?
Yeah, for as far as what you already raised for equipment.
I think as long as it's in, as long as it's in City Park, uh, you know, I think that that's what the businesses agree to, is the optics of that, to, to be able to draw as much attention to the fact that they are backing this. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know if I've specifically gone through and said who all is backing the course, but I, you know, I would love to go through and say, you know, what contributors have, have donated full, full holes to, to this, including concrete baskets. You know, I, I'd be more than happy to go through and give a hole by hole on who, who has donated, if you'd like.
Why don't you make a list of that and send it, give it to Austin, and we can, he'll distribute it with...
Okay. Okay. Hole one is Washington Veterinary Clinic in Washington, Kansas. Uh, hole two is 12th Street Liquor. Hole three is Citizens Bank. Uh, hole four is Marysville Sports and Rec, which is Mr. Frogel. Uh, hole five is Blue Valley Telecommunications. Hole six is Landall. Hole seven is United Bank. Hole eight is Marysville Dental Care, and hole nine is J.D. Construction.
Okay. Thanks so much. Are you done?
One more point of clarification on the, the acreage question. Sorry to keep hammering on that. Included in that was, in your estimate, or your number, was the trail, correct?
Yes, the trail and south of the trail in the...
The garden area?
Uh, the trees, and I know that that was kind of a point of gray area, that when we discussed it with the, the city park manager, that that was kind of a gray area. But yes, that, that was included in the plat, was the, the grove of trees. I don't think the...
Not the open area was?
No, the open area was in that, uh, as well.
Okay.
Okay. Terry? You have questions for...
Yeah. Why didn't you come to the city to begin with?
Um, you know, it's just something that, that I took initiative to do, and I, I...
That was a mistake. Go ahead.
I, I disagree that that's not a mistake at all. Uh, I think that you, I think that this city needs young people like myself who care.
I'll go for that.
But I, I disagree why, why you say that that's something that's a mistake. Like, I went out and did this on my own accord and went through the proper channels to then present it to you. And I, you know, it's not something that I went out there and just decided I was gonna start putting out baskets.
Well, who, who instilled you to...
Myself.
Just by yourself?
I play disc golf all the time, you know, if I'm able to.
I, I like, I like sports too. I've got nothing against you having something like that, but there's a procedure to go through when you go to a municipality and try to get something done, and it would be nice if you...
Have I not gone through the proper procedures to...
Really not.
If, I, I think his point is, if you were gonna put it on your property, your property, then knock yourself out. Do it. But when you're gonna, your whole purpose is to put it on city property, we, we should be, we have to be in bar...
We can't hear you.
We knocked him out.
Knocked it off.
I knocked him out.
The gavel.
We would take them and move them, because they didn't want anybody to hear what they were saying.
It wasn't everyone in there who didn't get their hair...
Well, I know what I'm saying, you know, it's...
Are we up?
But what I'm saying, Todd, is...
He was.
Anyway, when it deals with city property, instead of having it all done and say, here's what we want, we, I, I think Terry's just saying, if, once you decide you want it on city property, we should be involved.
And if Sporting Rec were the ones that convinced you to do this first, they have a contractor at the city to begin with, and they should've been in here talking to us before you did it.
Brian Frogel's been in here numerous times.
Not about this?
Yes, he has.
Well, he has the last two meetings, yeah. That's, I understand that.
I, I'm, he, he did, he did not convince me to do this at all. In fact, I had started basically contacting these major companies, and then someone said, hey, you know, you should, you should talk to, to Mr. Frogel about this. And that's when I did, and that's when he said, you know, hey, it's something I can get you on the, the docket for, or help you basically, you know, basically say, hey, this is the, this is the deal. This is what you need to do to take the proper steps to get this done, and not just, you know, haphazardly going about this, you know? This is something that...
Okay. Well, when you designed this map, whoever did, why didn't they put some dimensions and stuff on it?
There, as far as, like, total footage?
No, as far as from, distance from the hole to the basket, where's out of bounds? This thing is just a photograph with a bunch of punch, punch pins on it.
Again, that's, that's just based on the fact that it doesn't cost $400 a hole to have it planned, um, you know?
It will if the city does it, because we gotta know that before you can have it there.
Understood. And, but again, the reason I went with the more cost-effective option is, is, is the fact that I didn't know that, that this would get approved or not. And going out of pocket would be something that's pretty expensive.
No.
Well, so, so you expected us to question it?
No, not necessarily. Actually, I thought it'd be a slam dunk, knowing that there was close to $6,000 in, in money ready to go, and I'm literally asking nothing from you but a yes vote.
A city, well, no. Come on, Kyle. You're asking for use of our city property, of our main city park.
It's our city property as well. Like, it's, it's, it's public city property. It's not all your city property. It's everybody's.
I understand, but we have the fiduciary...
Or, please...
Okay. If we start clapping again, I'm gonna ask certain people to leave. Okay, so the key thing about this is, we have the fiduciary responsibility to all taxpayers for the land. That's my point.
Elected you, so it's a habit...
Absolutely, to make those decisions.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we're responsible. What we vote to is, we're responsible for what you're asking us to do. Do you understand that? Because when it comes down to, you kinda shut yourself in a foot when you said your arguments about the football players and these sporting things. All of those children, they have to sign, get parent permission, and their parents are still responsible for them. But when a little guy goes down walking on this trail over here with his earphones on and stuff, and he gets clattered on the side of the head with one of these things and gets hurt, he, we're, we're gonna be responsible for it, because we have allowed people to throw discs where they might hit him.
Are you not responsible for any injuries that would happen on City Park, be it football or not? Falling out of swings, falling off of...
The football players are all insured.
No, that, that's actually not. They can come back on us. I know this, 'cause my child was injured at a school function.
And he didn't get help through his insurance?
Nope. It all goes to, it all goes to the, the organization that owns the land's responsibilities insurance. So it would come to our insurance. But if our city attorney were here, I would ask for the clarification I asked for last meeting, because as I understand, there's a special statutory protection in Kansas for city parks, because of the assumption of risk that Mr. Wilson brought up.
But does that...
Well, none of us are lawyers here, so we can't speak to that.
No, but, but can that conflict if we openly advocate making targets out of our citizens? That's what's gonna happen.
Okay. Audience, please, you have to show respect for the council. We're trying to have a conversation.
That's not funny. It, it really is. It's kinda, it can be tragic. Maybe it'll never be tragic, and I sure hope so, 'cause I'm not trying to keep anything from happening. Were you down at the park this weekend?
No, I was not.
You couldn't find a place to park, 'cause of everybody at the swimming pool, the whole park was crowded. It was that way the whole weekend. If there was a disc tournament or something going on, there's a good chance somebody might've got hit with a disc, even though they didn't want to. You know, those things can happen. If they had their own, if you have, we have our own disc park, maybe you can have your own disc golf, and we can put it someplace where it's not in a multi-use park. I'll, I'll be glad to see that happen.
Um, I just wanted to point out that I've been on councils a number of years, and as far as the cart ahead of the horse situation we were just talking about, I think a lot of times people come to us with things and they come kind of half-cocked. And so a lot of times, we ask people to come to us with the research. I actually kind of want to be the flipside of that and say, I appreciate that he did all this research and spent the time and effort on his time, instead of dumping it on us to spend the money and time. I mean, even if we wanna do more, that's good, but I would like people to come informed.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, let me finish something.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you, are, are you, have anything else, Terry?
This is just for, I, I had a, one other question. I just, uh, I wanted to, where was it? I, I just thought about it. Do you have a list? That was one more question I wanted to ask. Do you have some design standards?
As far as...
Pardon?
As far as, I'm just curious...
As this course that's gonna be put on our park?
I mean, what would be...
Your park?
What would be the design standards for McNish Park or any other parks that I've visited? You know, I, I, I think that that's really subjective to the park itself. I, you know, I don't think that there's any sort of design standards when it comes to the design of these parks, because when you look, yeah, it's, it's nice to say that these things you shouldn't do for, for disc golf, you know, crossroads, cross walking trails, have mixed, mixed-use areas, but in some of the places you're suggesting, as far as Lakeview Park, that's, that's a softball area with limited trees. Uh, there's, there's water there, where I've gotten quite a bit of support, and people saying that they wouldn't go to it at Lakeview, for the risk of, of children drowning or getting hit by softballs, or, you know, but, but again, it's gonna come back to everybody saying that, you know, there's these assumed risks, which, again, you, you get up every day and take these risks, but it's...
Have there, has there been any effort at all made to talk to the trails people about maybe putting it out here by where the trailhead is?
I, I think that that would be...
Has there been any effort? Yes or no?
No, there, there has not.
That's a shame. I'm sorry.
And, and I'm, I, I'm sorry for not looking into it as well, but, you know, again, it's, it's an open field. it's an open field, it's got no restrooms, no water, um, you know, it's controlled by the trail, which whoever that entity is, I'm, I'm not sure who you speak to for the, uh, the, the controlling stake in that, I know that there's a lot of, uh, easements for private landowners that are, that are there as well.
No, there's not, there's no, no private landowners at all, Union Pacific owns the whole thing, and the trail people have it rented.
So I need to speak with Union Pacific, then?
No, you just need to talk to the trail people, they have it as long as they're not putting railroad tracks back in there to run trains. But nobody's wanting to look into that. And it'd make an ideal thing to hook up Trail, Depot, the disc golf, and people could stay safe in the park. It's something to look into, and nobody wants to do it, because there might be some work and effort. And, and just to have the city employees know it, so you can go ahead and play your disc golf and hurt somebody, I, I'm against what you're doing, I want what you're doing, but I want it in the right place.
And I guess that that would be something that would be a concern of mine for that area, is who's gonna maintain it? Would, would that...
Usually that gets worked out. It does if people have any initiative and really want something and plan for it, instead of having something that's congested in the park.
Hence why I'm standing here this evening.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't have any more to ask you about.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the question.
Well, I commend you on, um, doing the, taking the initiative.
Thank you.
And obviously, there's a desire for a disc golf course in the community, based on everybody that's here, and the emails that I have received, but I've also received negative comments too, and that's just part of it. In referring to some of these incidents where people did get hit, I've never played disc golf, but I'm assuming, are there different sized discs for different pars? And I know you said the other day that it's, and since it's in a small area, the pars aren't very big, so I'm assuming are the discs smaller? 'Cause I know there was something in here where a disc had like a metal rim around it, and it hit somebody, and is that for like a big par?
None of these would be, none of these would be, none of these would be metal surrounding them at all, they're all the, the plastic, the, those would be probably a representation of all the discs that would, you would ever use on a course itself.
In this size of a course.
Yes, yeah, based on, the, all of them would be par threes, basically, so not very far. Um, again, if, if you look at PDGA website, they say that you probably need an acre and a half per, per hole, but that's if you're creating a championship-level 18-hole course that would draw 1,100 people like Emporia does, whereas we're, you know, the, the design that, that was put in place is called a pocket or a picnic size, which is not as long, um, wouldn't require, you know, enormous throws by competitors or, you know, beginner players at all, it, that's, that's basically what we were going for, is a more relaxed style, not the, not the, uh, professionals showing up and, and, you know, doing what they do, but, um, yeah. That, that, to answer your question, yes, it would be a smaller pocket course or picnic style course that's not as, as long and require longer throws, so it'd be...
And then, in going back to what Terry's comment was on the other day, where, um, the park was really busy, I think somewhere in here, it did something about where you could actually cover the baskets, so they could not be played at all during a busy time?
Yeah, actually, what you can do, you could cover it and put, uh, like, "Course Closed" sign on the, the sign that Convention and Tourism has offered to fund, uh, basically put a large "Course Closed" sign on that, or like for extremely busy times like the Mother's Day, you could actually pull the baskets themselves that are locked into place by padlocks, um, and then they could be taken out altogether. The holes that you would remove the baskets from would be covered with sprinkler, uh, sprinkler valve covers, so there's no risk of anybody falling into a hole, uh, anything like that, you know, it would be taken care of, uh, as far as, you know, that goes, you'd be able to, to remove them altogether. But yes, if you, if you could actually cover them with a specific cover that would say, "Hey, course, course closed."
I don't have any other comments. I, I agree that maybe it would be best if the city did, since there obviously is a desire, to look into having it mapped out with the guidelines. That would be my takeaway on it, is, since there is a big desire that, if the city would look into having it drawn up...
I don't think anybody in, in the last two meetings, including this meeting, has said that it's a bad idea. Not one person is against it. It's just trying to figure out the most logical, safest course that we can have in our city.
Understood.
Are you done, Gina?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, my background is architecture, and when we did draw up plans, it was very detailed, so, um...
So you would appreciate the detailed course thinking?
I would.
Okay, Bobby?
I think if we're gonna do this, when you're gonna have a tournament, we need to figure out how to get, and I'm not talking when I say permit, I'm not talking like an extraordinary amount, but what this is, and then, uh, you guys, your own group, if you're gonna have a tournament, you need to take the cost, to put a little bit of a blurb in the paper saying, "The tournament will be here, people will know." And that way, you know, the, people will come through, but, you know, they'll know what's going on.
Yeah.
They won't be surprised, you know, and we had talked about, did we talk about last time?
We talked about having a contract for the for-profit groups, so that, number one, we would know about it.
There you go.
But number two, we know who's using our park on a for-profit basis.
Well, and that, we could just segue into that, and then you guys need to have some signage, saying, "Tournament," you know, "in tournament."
Progress type thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's where I, I think...
And I would even go, I would even go as far as say that any competitors sign, you know, waivers of, of basically liability, saying if they, if people are, you know, other, other competitors are, are there, just, just to take that next step, to even say, "Hey, you know, you're, you're competing here on City Park," you know, that, that they're not responsible for anything to happen, similar to...
Yeah, and that, that would be, I would be comfortable with that sort of a contractual agreement, that if somebody coming in got hurt, then we're not gonna be responsible for them.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I don't know how these guys would feel, but that would alleviate a bit of it.
Yeah.
Okay?
I, I agree, 100%.
And like I said, now, like I said, you know, the permit and a signage to let people know, those are my, my two thoughts on it. Okay, that's it, go ahead, darling.
Okay, darling.
Uh, Kyle, in your materials that you gave us, why include disc golf in your recreation program, under "land required"? Um, it says, "A small picnic scale, nine-holer could be squeezed into five to six acres," but don't you think they mean when nothing else is there?
No, that's, that, that takes into consideration other small parks like McNish Park, like the Harrington Park, like, like any, any, any smaller parks that, that can be used.
That could have been designed wrong. And then it goes on to say, "A significant advantage for disc golf is its ability to utilize land areas that aren't very desirable or usable for any other activity." Do you drive through City Park at various times a day? I do, I have been, since we started this discussion. Uh, last time was Thursday evening, there were two large RVs, the size of buses, and a fifth-wheel that size, two smaller campers, three tenters, um, out where, where the course would be, but they're in the tenting area.
We actually took into consideration those, those areas and, and avoided them as far as...
And then I stopped and talked with this one group of campers that was at a table, and I said, "I'm not trying to case you out, but, um, there's people that wanna put a disc golf course in here." And one of the gal says, "Oh, this gentleman plays disc golf." And I said, "What do you think about in this park?" He said, "There's not enough room, unless," he said, "it's next to the highway."
It's, it's too bad he's not here to give that testimony.
Well, he plays, he plays many different places.
It's also too bad that many of the 97 people who have commented on my Facebook or, you know, come up to me, or called me, or text me, aren't here to, to give that testimony as well, so I, I, I think that that's a subjective point to make.
And how many of them, besides some of these people, have played disc golf? I'm the only one on council who's played disc golf. Has anybody gone out yet and tried to play? Um, so, and the people I've talked to and said they were for it, I said, "Oh, do you play disc golf?" "No." "What do you know about it?" Well, they didn't know anything, but they heard people say, "Hey, it's the thing to do." And again, I, I'm for a disc golf course, but not at City Park.
And I think that that's something that, you know, if, if we could have plans, you know, that, that what it, so, so what happens if a planner comes in and does in fact say, you know, "City Park is the best park as far as utilization of space, optics, amenities," like, what, what then?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I, I, I hope we get to find out. I hope that can happen, because...
If it works.
Because what, what if it does? What if, what if an accredited is, as you say, like, I, I, I still feel that the gentleman I used is, got a pretty good resume as far as planning for Citiescope, but, you know, what happens then? Like, will this just be another, "Oh, we table it until we find somebody else that's gonna plan this," or, until we're out of people to find it?
Well, Kyle, we wanna do the right thing, we want, don't want to just rubber stamp something and find out all the problems later.
I don't wanna haphazardly do anything either, which is why I've done all the, the legwork on this, with, except for going $400 per hole out of pocket, which, you know, if that's something that, you know, the city's willing to help me on, I, I would be very happy to accept that, and, you know, be able to get you the correct contacts to be able to, uh, you know, speak with these companies and, and discuss bids, and be able to have them come to town and, and, and plan a course, and if, if it's something that they say that, "Yeah, let's go to Lyons Park," or, you know, something like that, then, then I will be happy to, to have a disc golf course in town, but I, I feel like that they are gonna also come and say, "This is, this is the park to have it." I don't wanna speak for them, but I, I feel like that, what if that happens then? That, that would be my question, is what happens then, if they still say that this is the park to have it in?
Well, hopefully, they would give us a scaled design like Gene and I would wanna see, and we can have peace of mind that it all's gonna fit.
Okay.
Let's see that insurance that, that you carry around, when you throw it in a crowd and hurt somebody, that you have on these discs, let's see a policy.
I, I explained that if we use the dynamic disc, that they have a, a policy, if we use their baskets, that it would encompass City Park, based on the fact that we're using their equipment.
And that'll protect the people you hit.
If in the, if in the, uh, very off chance that somebody does get hit, yes, that that would encompass anybody that is in that area.
That would get hit by a, a one that goes off, off skill or on account of the wind or whatever.
Okay, so do you have anything else?
Not currently, no idea, no.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, um, what I'd like to do is to go ahead and proceed with what, um, is in the agenda, just so you guys understand why the other documents were put in. On page 24, I put in when the disc golf was discussed previously, and it looks like, from '07, so in '07, it looks like that one of the council members brought a map and said, "Hey, we need to do this at Lakeview," and the council approved it, and they put it in. And I, and obviously, it wasn't a good course, people aren't using it, the baskets aren't done right, and consequently, now we have a disc golf course that's not being utilized. And so, I, we, we as a council need to learn from our mistakes, and not do the same thing just to take a map, install it, and, and just say, "It'll all work out." So, um, with that being said, Terry put in pages from, as well, and do you wanna share anything about your pages?
I did bring one of those discs in here, and, um, if you guys have all looked at it, according to the person that it was purchased from, if it's thrown, it can reach speeds of 60 to 70 miles per hour, and travel distances up to 400 feet. The perimeter of that thing's pretty rigid and sharp. If you guys have read those, the council, if they've read the three articles included in, in the agenda, the first article told the story about a lady that was hit in the face by a flying disc and blinded. She sued the city and won a $3 million lawsuit. At the same park, a six-year-old boy sustained a life-threatening brain injury, eventually they closed that disc golf course. In the second article, a man was hit in the face by a flying disc, busted his eyeglasses and destroyed his eye, and he was blinded. In the third news article, a six-year-old boy was hit by a flying disc and injured, even though he was wearing a helmet, he had to have 12 stitches. I'm sure these cases, or these people involved, by the people making this decision to install disc golf in the parks, discussed all this and knew it never could happen, but it did happen. So, I'm kinda certain that, or, I'm sure that, uh, these things can happen, I hope they never do happen, but if they do, who's out? The city's out, all of us as taxpayers, we're all gonna be out. 'Cause it's similar to the $3 million deal about the one gal, the actress is going through something very similar to that, because they, they decided to do something they never should have done. It's, it's kinda got me scared. But in this one article where, now I got, I, I, I thought it was interesting that this attorney said that was the one about the, about the woman blinded. This attorney is quoted as saying, "It sounded like a great idea, but nobody vetted it, and nobody cared, and nobody took responsibility." When that, and then also in another quote, he says, in the same subject, he says, "There's no way this type of game should be played at a multi-use park. This game should be played on dedicated land like a golf course. There's a reason you can't go walking on a golf course in the middle of the day." Hopefully, in the future, people will, will realize these things and don't, the, things don't belong in parks where people are walking. If you think we can overcome all that, maybe it's a good idea to get a designer in and do it. The public, this is city property, and it's gotta be done by city people, and I listen, I have the privilege to hear all the phone calls that was going on, that we're all old and all that, that there's a lot of truth to that, that there's a lot of truth to that. But the safety of everybody comes first, and I'm very sorry, that's my, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I speak for a second? I, I just haven't understood why we keep bringing up this, they might get hurt by disc golf, with all of the other things that we allow to happen on city property, that, I mean, some, we let RVs park down there, I'm sure I could find a case online where somebody ran over some kid with an RV. I mean, things happen. I, I just don't see why we'll allow kids to play baseball, I mean, you can get hit by a baseball. If I had a choice between getting hit by this, or a baseball in the face, or a basketball, I'd probably prefer the frisbee to tell you the truth.
I don't know if it's going 60 miles per hour.
Well, but...
Baseball can go 100.
Baseballs can go way over 60 mile an hour, or softballs, basketballs can do damage if it's in the face.
Jason, you should try to play a course.
I probably won't play it, but I won't vote against something just because I won't use it personally, that's not my...
But you should try it to see.
No, but it, but you shouldn't vote against things just because you won't use it.
Okay.
I mean, you have to take the entire city...
Let, let's talk, let's talk first. So do you feel, council, that there's adequate interest to look into it? Is there adequate interest to go the next step from a city standpoint?
Yes.
So everybody says it's, so, so we all agree that it's a good idea.
Yes.
So, in my opinion, the next step is to hire, um, an accredited disc golf designer, have him look at, now, I don't think we need to limit them to City Park, I think we need to show them all the potential places in city, and let them tell us where is the best place to put a nine-hole course.
Yes.
And, and I think we need to give them that option, and then design a course that he or she feels is safe.
Can we, can you create a committee or something, and include Kyle and maybe a few other people that are...
Well, I think what we need to do is to, um...
Mayor, should we contact the state parks group?
Why would that be?
I would think they would have, have, um, maybe a list of certified...
Well, there's a list that Design, DiscCourseDesign.org lists accredited designers all across the, excuse me, all across the Unite-, yes, I will, all across the United States, and those are the accredited ones, and we would want someone from that list.
That list is just a private organization that charges members fees, it's like the ADA, you don't have to be in, in the ADA to be a dentist, and you don't have to be a member of this to be professional disc golf, it says "right so" on their website. There's no, it's quoted as saying that, "There is no formal certification of the PDGA available, nor colleges which offer a curriculum in disc golf course design." So there is no standard, it's just an organization, if we choose it, that's okay, but please do not represent it as the be-all, end-all, it's just an organization.
Okay, well, I just thought it would make sense to try to get someone knowledgeable to come in and look at all the courses, look at all the potential spaces, and, um, make a recommendation. I think at this point in time, uh, we wanna hire somebody to actually look at and give us a location, and then, once we're okay with that location, then we design a course. We tell them it's gonna be nine holes. Now, what we can do is we can get this guy that Kyle has, and we can see what kind of certification he has compared to the other ones that we could find, and make a decision on who to go with to design it. Does that make sense?
Madam Mayor, I, I just think that they probably feel like that, if I was them, I would feel like we're kind of... like we're kind of putting up roadblocks and kind of putting this off. You don't think so?
Not at all.
If I was out there, I would probably feel that I was having roadblocks put up in front of me, just hoping that I would kind of go away. That's what I would feel like.
I would think that they would appreciate the fact that safety is our number-one concern, and we're trying to do it right this time, because in '07, we did not. Kyle, you came up?
I would like to say, like, what happens if it doesn't go in City Park, and all the people who have graciously offered to fund these holes pull it because they don't like the location of the optics? Will the city pick up the additional six grand that I've raised, or?
Well, I think we need to be open-minded and let them make that recommendation first.
I agree, but I'm just presenting, you know, other options for this, that, you know, if in the event it does get planned and a professional comes in...
I would think you would embrace that, Kyle.
I would.
Because we would probably make it, by having a professional, we'd probably have a lot better course, and it would rate higher, and you'd have more tournaments.
Maybe, I mean, that's speculative on both our accounts, but, you know, I don't know, I'm just, again, speculating, what happens if this is brought to another park, and the people who have, again, graciously agreed to donate full hole funding decide to pull it?
Well, you would think that if they really want disc golf, they would want disc golf at the best place.
They also want to be able to advertise as well, I think that there's...
Well, there are signs, we'd still be there, right?
There's motives there that are not just, you know, other than public health, which is, I think, an important thing, but, you know, I would like to believe that there's some other motives there as well, but that's just a point that I want to bring up, is what happens if they pull all their funding based on that? And that's the only thing I had to...
Well, let's not get too hardy for the horse, what's that for you? Let's try to hire somebody to make a recommendation. So why don't we, I think we need to set up an ad hoc committee, and I think it needs to have two people that are, we can't have two strong people yes and two strong people no, we need to have a balance there, or maybe we should have, let's see...
One that plays, one that doesn't.
Well, Darlene's the only one that plays.
Right.
And you're a detailed person, and, right? And then, let's have one other person that, I think you're kind of neutral, that's mine. Darlene, I think is more of a no at this point, not, not, not no, not no disc golf, but no in City Parks.
Yes.
So if I could, I think I'll balance it with one more that is okay with it. So either Jason or Todd...
Okay, was it in City Park?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to get a balance here. Why are you laughing, Todd?
I'm over rock, paper, scissors for it.
Oh, I'm just sitting there going, I'm trying to do the right thing here, get a neutral group here that can get with a professional, go around, are you willing to do it, Darlene, I should ask?
Sure.
And Gina, are you willing to go around? And so, Jason or Todd, Todd, you already say you're so busy, do you want me to give it to Jason?
Yeah, give it to him, it's fine.
I just, Jason, are you willing to be on it?
That's fine.
Okay, so your goal is we will work together and find somebody, and then find someone who will walk and look at all the...
We probably need to get a hold of the trails, don't we? I mean, we better sort that out if it's even an option.
I know who all the board is, if you need...
Okay, so let's go ahead and make a motion to create this ad hoc committee. Excuse me, no?
I can't ask a question before you make a decision as a...
No, no.
Can I make a motion to allow her to speak?
I would like to make, we need a motion to set up the ad hoc committee, meeting, committee, being Darlene, Gina, and Jason.
Would you like discussion after the motion, if there's more discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to set up the ad hoc committee.
With those three people?
As you're presented, yes.
Is there a second?
I should.
What would the discussion be?
Okay, the trail thing, I think, this is my just thoughts for the ad hoc committee. Yeah, it'd be all right to talk to them. A particular concern up there is that it's pretty unregulated, because it's not currently in the city. Also, there's signs that say no ATV use or loose dogs, and I know that there's people in this room who let their dogs loose and run ATVs on those trails, so that might be a point of concern. So I just want to make sure you do all the legwork on that stuff, because it's kind of outside of the city's realm.
That's a good point.
Also, I had something else really good, but I can't remember what it is, I took like three pages of notes. But I, you know, I just think that'd be good, make sure you, you know, do all the legwork on all the options, and that's it. I can't remember.
There's no ATVs or loose dogs up there.
Sir, I've seen you do it, I've seen you with a loose dog on that trail.
You've never seen one.
Yes, sir, I have, I use that trail.
Okay, excuse me, wait, council, all right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to proceed looking into the disc golf.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sir?
Excuse me?
Do you know what electric leash is? Excuse me.
It does not what the sign says, the sign says most...
Excuse me?
He brought it.
Okay, we're going to proceed with the agenda, the next agenda item should be a lot quicker, it's a request for squirrels.
Madam Mayor, we can't make a motion to hear what she had to say?
No.
Why cannot we not listen to a resident if they have something else to say?
Jason, we gave them every option at Public Commons, that's when they share. Okay, so we're going to move along to the request for squirrels on page 34. How do you guys feel about that?
If you can find one full black squirrel in town anymore...
Wait a second, wait, will you shut that door so we can hear?
And I'm not making fun, but like...
But if we can find what?
I'm not making fun, we have a lot of biracial squirrels, there's not just a black squirrel.
Yeah, there's a lot with brown tails.
Thank you, they're black with red, or they're red with black legs, or, you know...
Well, I think the main thing is, the only time we've ever let somebody take that squirrel was because it was Sherry McNary for educational purposes, and she was a wildlife rehabilitator. That's totally different than somebody who wants to put them in their backyard to mate, so...
I think it's kind of like, it's the brand, and I kind of, after reading this, maybe we should have said something or had in her thing that she couldn't mate them, because it is the brand for this community, and it, you need to copyright it at some point, I kind of feel, because...
Are we the only one, though, that has the black squirrel?
Well, I think they've moved out.
They live in Iowa, they're all across Iowa, Illinois.
Council's, yeah.
Well, the key thing is, do we, do we want to, do we want to permit this man in Lincoln, Nebraska to have our squirrels?
Mayor, I believe this gentleman is a private individual, he's not with a group, and our black squirrels are protected.
Yeah. So we could go ahead and make a motion and vote it down.
No.
We can make a motion to accept, do it, and vote zero eight.
I don't think you can make a...
You can't make a motion to negative.
Now, I'm saying, make a motion that they, he can do it, and then vote it down.
One thing, I'd take to interrupt you, is this has happened before, where people, they wanted to trap our squirrels. Are we, say, you say we have squirrels, like, we do have animals, foxes, squirrels that get diseases here, and we have to put them down from time to time, what happens if we allow somebody to take something, and they reintroduce it somewhere else in a transfer something from here? Are we liable for that? That's kind of what I, something I wanted to say on that as well.
Okay, thank you, chief. So I would entertain a motion, and then we can vote it down, we would make a motion to give them the squirrel, second it, and then we could vote zero eight not to do it, that's the way to do it, if you want it to be a negative.
Or it can die for lack of motion.
Or it can just...
It can die.
Well, then, if you don't make a motion, they can bring it up again, this way we voted it down. That ends, yes.
I believe we got an order, or a law here where they're protected, how can we give away something that's protected?
The law says that the council can approve somebody trapping them.
You giving them one?
Yes.
Giving them away?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we allow this gentleman to have a black squirrel, or a pair of black squirrels.
A pair, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, eight, so that would be a no. All right. The next item, I have a slight revision for you guys, Craig looked at this today. I'm sorry. The only thing he changed from the one that's in the packet, I'll wait for you to get it. Did you get him?
Oh, that can pass one time.
Do we have one extra? Is there one extra somewhere? Okay.
Share.
You can share, okay. I just want to make sure, Darlene, did you get one?
She's got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We got an extra.
All right, so the only difference between the one that's in the packet and the one here is he changed it from non-exempt employees to general employees, because that's how they're referred to in our handbook, our personnel policy, I mean, and so wherever I had non-exempt, we, he changed it, he recommended changing it to general. And the only other thing is, he wanted me to identify specifically exempt employees, so on B, as you see, those three positions are the exempt positions. And that's the only change. So I would entertain a motion to approve this policy as, this would be as amended, I guess, or as presented, how should I say this, Cindy? Would this be considered amended?
Amended, because it was presented in the packet one way, it's amended.
Okay, so this would be the as amended A...
I move the policy resolution A-83 as amended, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have discussion. You can agree or disagree with this, but this is a backwards policy. It is limiting to three employees, and I was not asked, this affects three people, not consulted, not given a chance to talk to. If we're going to go forward with policies, this should be a conversation and not just a top-down situation. I know people disagree with how things are sometimes ran, but it shouldn't just be, "I don't like this, so do it my way," sort of thing. That's how you alienate employees, that's how you cause mistrust, and that's how you discourage people from wanting to work with you and for you and all that stuff. That's my personal opinion, take it or leave it, that's all.
Mayor?
Yes.
Where I've worked, this policy is, that's generally the way they're stated.
Yeah, and that's exactly what the league said, is that it needs to be specified in our personnel policy, and so that's what I did, I took what they suggested and put it in. All right, so we have a motion to approve as amended and presented, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Uh-oh.
Division of the House?
Excuse me?
Division of the House, what did you say, when?
Well, do roll call then? Darlene?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
One, two, three, four, five.
And I vote yes, so five, four, so it is approved. All right, we will move on to, so what's next? Notices and hearings, we do have a hearing coming up?
Yes, we do, mayor. This coming Thursday, June 14th, the Planning Commission meeting will be at 7:00, and what is on the agenda is a public hearing for a use permitted upon review to allow a triplex residential structure to be in an R3 district, which is residential light industrial.
Address? The address of it?
It's City Hall.
7:00.
And the property is located where?
That isn't given.
It's on Jackson Street.
I just thought it affected somebody they wanted to come.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think we actually have an address, we showed the lot in those pictures, so, on Jackson Street, between 77...
Break-in lots, or break-ons.
And 7th Street, between those two, that's a good description, Jackson Street, okay.
I just thought...
All right, the next item is the consent agenda.
May I approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
I just have two comments on page 41. Just going forward, can you put down what money, what we're making on those idle funds, those investments in idle funds?
Okay.
Do you know what we're making?
It's two different rates, because it depends, some we did longer term than other, and I'd have to look.
Okay, so if we could just put those...
You want the idle funds rates.
Yeah, just put them in in the future.
Yep.
And the other thing, I noticed that the Capital Improvements Fund is a negative balance?
That was because the FAA did not issue the funds as they were supposed to, they had a miscommunication, it's been since cleared up.
We've received those funds?
We've received those funds.
It was like 40, $38,000 or something like that, were you saying that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were only like 13,000 in the hole.
Yeah, and because that's an unbudgeted account, we can go negative, but it's not a violation.
It is a violation, and we're talking with the auditor.
I thought, even in an unbudgeted fund, we can't do it?
The key labor, key labor came into my office and stated that it was a concern to him, he said our auditor might dock us for it, or he might, or he might not.
What's that mean, dock us?
It just put it in our review.
It's a...
A violation? Okay, so what we shouldn't have done, I thought, you always told me that we don't release that check till we have the FAA money.
Which is normally true, if I write the voucher. But I was a part of the game.
I was told that was the procedure, that...
That was typically the procedure.
That's typically the procedure, Debbie was gone, and it just happened, she wrote the voucher, I didn't go back, because it wasn't part of the game.
And typically, when we issue the request, it's done the next day, they have the money...
Because it comes quickly, it comes to her email.
So everything just aligned to misalign, and it was, it was...
Okay, but I think I have questions on appropriations ordinances in the past, and that I've always been told that we don't release that money till we have the cash in hand.
Right, and that's typically what happens, I'm just...
Okay, we just need to make sure that happens.
Yes.
Okay, and the only other comment I had is, you know, now that we have monies at that CBK for that municipal court, and the monies at the water and sewer, I think it would be helpful to have a recap of what we have outstanding and what we have at SB, B and K, SB, CBK, just so we know overall what our receivables are outstanding and how much money from both departments, what do you guys think? Don't you think that'd be helpful, knowing how much our receivables are for municipal court, and knowing what's at CDK, to know that the credit bureau is working on it? You guys okay? All right, so in the future, can we have that added to that report? Did you follow that, Cindy?
How many reports have we got since we did that? Have we got any?
We haven't got any report on CB, what monies are there, and...
I've gotten one in the mail.
I mean, but we haven't, we as a government body haven't seen any of the reports on it.
Okay.
So going forward, we'll get that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, did anybody else have any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? ADO. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
We approve appropriation ordinance 3676.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Darlene, you're not going to say anything?
Well, let's see. It was a smaller amount this time.
It was 76,000 went to the library, I thought you were going to say that.
76,026 dollars.
I figured you'd mention that, but, okay. Is there any other discussion about the appropriations ordinance? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Vivian?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schruller?
Yes.
Drum?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
ADO, okay, staff reports. Now, before you get started, I just have one question for you, because the first three are all have to do with sales tax, and then later on, you make a, you make a comment somewhere, I think, that, something about paperwork for the Clink. Can you explain... Can you explain that before we start talking about spending more sales tax money?
For the Clink, we're still working on the finalization of the paperwork. Hall Brothers is reporting something in for the paperwork, so we can get that for KDOT to approve. I have pretty much everything lined up to send in. We're just waiting on a few things to line up. Once we do that, send it in, we should get our three hundred thousand dollars from KDOT.
Okay. So when we're going to look at all these things that are spending money on the sales tax fund, do we need to wait till that happens? Or I should ask the council, you know, if it should happen to draw down to three hundred thousand dollars, are you guys going to freak out? Because let's say worst-case scenario, we don't get the three hundred thousand, and we approve all these and get them done. And I know that's a worst-case scenario, but we have nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the sales tax right now. And if we improve these bids, and the ramp, and the Fourteenth Street, and do our transfers, and do the trees, and not get the Clink, it could bring our balance down to like three hundred thousand dollars. I just want to say that, so you guys don't get nervous.
We still have approximately every month coming in.
Some monies coming in.
Has been, actually been pretty decent. I don't want to like throw it off, but it's been, we're trending above normal on our sales tax.
I just, do you still, you think we should go ahead and talk about these in spite of not having that three hundred thousand?
Yes. I think we would, in fact, some of my projections, some of my thought process behind this was doing, not cognitively, not realizing that we still had three hundred thousand dollars coming in, that I believe our sales tax will be just fine. And I was doing the budget, and then at the end of it, I go, oh, forgot that three hundred thousand dollars. I think.
So the three hundred thousand dollars, the reason why we don't have it, it's not because of somebody, something we're not doing, it's because of other people not doing it?
Right. Yes. They're supposed to be sending it to me. They're working on it. It's no, I don't want to blame anybody, but it's just, we're getting it all together. It's a lot of paperwork.
Okay. I don't remember us having problems like that before.
This is my first time closing it out, so that may be an issue too. So I'll take that, too.
Okay. You can go ahead with your report.
Let's see. Go back. It's got a load. Okay. First one up, street bids. Just to clarify, this is, we have four projects, but only three of them are being bid this time. We have a fourth one that's due on June twentieth, which is our hometown drive addition, or not addition, but redo over the whole street. So these are the first three projects, Carolina Street, Third to Fifth, Twentieth Street, North to Airport Road, North Street to Airport Road, and Twentieth Street, Center to Carolina. And we had two bidders. One was AHRS, one was InLine, for the street projects. And on all three projects, AHRS was the lowest with each of their bids. And they came within thousands of dollars of our estimation, of my estimations of what these projects would cost. I figured one-twenty for Twentieth, for, no, for Carolina Street, one-twenty for Third to Fifth, I figured, and they came in at one-twenty-two-five-hundred. I figured two-hundred-and-twenty for Twentieth Street by Landals, that's North to Airport, and they came in at two-hundred-and-fifteen, two-ninety-eight. And me and Tony Dever went back and forth and came up with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Twentieth Street by Hardee's, which is Center to Carolina, and they came in at one-thirty-six, one-ninety-two. So all well within realms as the lowest bidders on those projects.
So you estimated about four-ninety, and they all came in at about four-seventy-three?
Right.
And so even though we only have two bids, you feel like it's a reasonable bid? The low bid is a reasonable bid?
Yeah. Yes. And I used my, the numbers I came up with were from previous bids, taking their numbers as well as previous contracts we've awarded, and came up with the numbers that I came up with, and then used Tony as bouncing off of those numbers as well. So I'm fairly confident.
I looked at the differences there, you know, just from a local business standpoint, again, since I'm always looking at local business, and it was about twenty percent over, which is fairly significant. It's definitely less than the ten percent policy we have in place for the local versus non-local. So what do you guys think? Yes.
I know that the bids are out for Carolina, Landals, and that up there on Twentieth Street. When I look at that big, you know how big it is, I'm sure that Twentieth Street thing, for safety's sake, probably is really, really necessary for semis turning and all that that they want to do. And then it'd be neat if that kind of money went into finishing Seventh Street, because that Carolina, they can drive on that for the twenty years, and they'd never even know the difference.
You're talking about the first one?
Madam Mayor? I, right.
Maybe that's your street.
Well, it is my street. And I don't have a problem with the street in front of my properties. I don't think it's, I mean, it's bad, but it's not that bad. But the next block over, and all those houses are full, so there's quite a few people live on that block. Whereas my block, there's only one, two, there's only four, five residences on, between both sides of the street. About half the lots are empty. But the one from Fourth to Fifth is in, it's in bad shape. That one is in bad shape, yeah.
Do we have a, does railroad traffic go up that road?
They do, yeah. Rail crew goes up that, they're probably one of the people that go up it as often as I do.
And then one of the reasons why we identified, well, at least I, I think I identified Carolina, Third to Fifth, is because citizens approached, came into my office and said that something needed to be done. We have somebody that is wheelchair-bound, that uses, right now has to use Carolina Street to get around, and he had some concerns in his wheelchair, getting place to place. And that's one of the main reasons why we put that on our list. And it was already on Gary's list of needing something to be done.
Worst-case streets?
Worst-case streets, yes.
Mayor, not recently, but last year I drove that street, and it was bad then. And we need to do work in different parts of town.
And I think that's why we selected those four streets, is they kind of hit all the quadrants in our city. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the bids from AHRS in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars to come out of the sales tax fund for street repairs.
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Seven, one. You didn't voice any concern. Would you like to?
Well, the sales tax fund going down so low is my concern. I think it's a little bit of your concern, too.
I just want, you know, before we approach this, you know, we should, you know, we should be getting the three hundred thousand, but should it go low, I don't want you guys to freak out. I just, full disclosure kind of thing.
This is also one of those projects that you can't let go too long, because we've got a deadline, as many blocks we have to be completed by October two.
October thirty-first. I understand. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Good point. Okay. Second project that was bid, or, well, in this case, the fourth project along with all this, was our ADA ramp project, which only one bidder bid. The other, AHRS, said they ran out of time to submit the bid, or else they would have. But that, besides the point. We had one bid for this inline construction. The bid came at ninety-eight thousand six forty. This is higher than expected. We kind of, me and Tony were also throwing back numbers, sixty to ninety thousand on this project after it was designed, because of all the extended crosswalk concrete work that needed to be, not crosswalk, but concrete work into the sidewalks, where some of them, to get them to grade, you had to take it a little bit further. So that kind of made the range where it was. But sixty to ninety is where the range was. And if we want to go forward with this, which I think this is, if any project, this is something to do to improve our walkability, mobility around town. We can split up these funds as well, between the general fund, which we have money budgeted for this, and just take a portion out of sales tax, a smaller portion.
So how do you guys feel about a project that we only get one bid? Do you feel like we need to wait? I mean, just because we get a bid doesn't mean we have to do it. It seems like we should always have at least two bids. I mean, look at the disparity between the AHRS and the inline bid.
To clarify, we didn't get any more bids, because I, one, sometimes contractors throw my letters out, but, two, I called them up. A few of them said that they didn't have time to fit this in their schedule. And I could see that, setting a firm timeline of October thirty-first, which is good for us, is kind of hectic on somebody who would come in and do this. And sometimes you will get this, where you only get one bid. Not that, like you said, we don't have to accept it.
Couldn't we, can't we actually go and contact some people and say, hey, we want to rebid this? Will you reconsider? Because like the difference between the inline bid and the AHRS bid was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That's a big difference. Yes.
I'm just curious, when we only got one bid, and where it's coming from, and he said they got a timeline on it, what's, is it going to interfere with trying to keep this contact with his letter of credit, and what have you with Harley bids?
I mean, that's a consideration, but I don't think that's taking a personal consideration on them.
I didn't mean it to be personal.
But it's their, they have a separate letter of credit going, hey, we'll do this. They also have the option to come and ask to extend it. But it's, this project should be separated from, hey, you have this over here, sort of thing. They should know to take that into their own consideration, and if they don't, then they get.
Can I ask about this specific project? Like the big street projects, I can imagine, but we can do concrete later than October thirty-first.
Yes.
So we could extend it.
And on this, on this project, it's not critical access like a street would be. So we could.
We could extend it out. What would be a safe date to extend it out to?
End of November.
November thirty? And see if we get an extra, see if somebody did it?
That'd be kind of iffy, too.
Doesn't matter that it's a smaller size?
No, because if it gets cold and freezes, it'll, what's the word I'm looking for?
Well, since it's a smaller project, that's probably, you know, contractors want to get the big contracts done. So that's probably because of the lack of interest.
Well, when you get to think about rejecting this and trying to rebid it, and trying to contact some contractors specifically.
Any lawsuit you can, those ones that you said you were in contact with? If we decide to rebid it, I mean, were there two or three of them?
I specifically communicated with five different contractors, yeah.
Well, how do you guys feel? I mean, I don't think there's an urgency on this, and I hate to waste taxpayer money if it's a high bid.
Does it have to be done this year? Is that why it has to be done before?
The idea, well, also, we have.
We need to keep moving forward on the ADA project.
We need to keep moving forward. I mean, we've gotten some progress. It's not, it's one of those things where it's not, it's not a broken-up street, so it's not a highly visible thing, but the one wrong move, and we are liable.
Can Hoeyor do this? Can Hoeyor do this concrete work?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
He has been our.
Sure he can.
Doesn't have to be.
But you are not going to get this kind of.
Well, you guys, are you guys happy with just one bid? I mean, I'm kind of thinking we should try it again. Should we extend it till November fifteenth? Would you be okay with that, Kevin?
I'd say, I think the end of November. I know it's pushing it, but.
Well, if it gets too cold, I mean, can they delay it then?
Well, then what are you going to do? Continue it into next year's project? We don't, that's just it. We need to set, where there's so many blocks that need to be done, we have to get so many done a year.
Well, we don't have any outside funding on this, so.
No, I know we don't.
There's still a possibility of it. I still have that grant out. They said at the end of June, they let me know. Not that.
Yeah, I know. We weren't planning on it anyway.
Madam Mayor, I move we reject all bids and resolicit bids for the project extending to the end of November.
Is there a second on that?
My second.
And is there any further discussion?
I think your date's too far out, but.
On Thanksgiving?
So noted, yeah.
When you say all bids.
There's only one, but I think you have to reject them all. Isn't that correct? Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to reject the bids and try again, and extend it to November thirty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven, one. All right.
All right. Excuse me. Third item is Fourteenth and Center sensor bid. I was asked by the street committee to come, to go get some bids to fix our sensors at Fourteenth and Center. And there, they urged me to go with video detection rather than putting them back in the ground where they can just deteriorate again, just like they are now.
You're being vague, being the committee?
The committee, yes.
Are you guys in agreement with that?
Can I say something here?
Yes.
When we talked about that, when they did work on the street, they tore the wire up too, down there.
When they worked at Thirty-Six Clink?
Yes. And if we wanted to fix it again, we'd have to go back in and tear it up. So if we just put it above, and that'll just take care of it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure you guys were all in agreement that that's.
That's what we talked about. You know, that was because of, how many years, how many years apart do we do the highway?
Seven.
Seven. You know, and if there's repairs or anything, you know.
We don't want to start digging.
I know. Well, that's the whole point.
You know, you notice how many people have used that, and they're not minding that flashing yellow at all. People are living with it. Maybe it's bothering you.
No, I love it.
You know, actually.
I think it's pretty good. We wouldn't have spent the money at all.
Actually, I kind of like the flashing yellow while school's not out.
Yes. At least during the summer.
Because that way, the most traffic, I think that light is, remember, on usage, wasn't that one of the highest-usage lights?
Which is mind-blowing.
I know. I can't get that. But it must be because of school.
It has to be. The hourly chart on that must be just huge, two huge spikes, but.
I wonder if we could program it to run during the school year, and then put it back to flashing in the summer.
You can.
It could be church, too.
You know, they did that church dedication. I thought for sure we'd hear that that was a big problem, and I never heard a word.
It gets confusing if it's on and off, maybe.
They're so used to coming out of there and it being congested anyway.
But you know, with the signal on it like it is, it should be primarily green ninety percent of the time.
And that's what I was going to ask. It talks about four sensors. I mean, it seems like, I mean.
It could be both ways, yeah. It'd be both ways, yeah.
Yeah.
You just want north and south sensors?
Yeah, I was like, almost like it seems like more sensors than needed.
You, you can.
Cause we don't ever want it to be more south open.
There was a, we talked about it, we, there was a disadvantage to just getting the two. Uh, one is that there's also a, it, it costs more per sensor for just two, uh, so we were.
And it probably calculated some sort of algorithm and timing or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, actually.
I love it, too, 'cause I live there and I would go through, I, I got fifteen trees, so I don't have to go through this.
It does not have a stick shift, that's a hard one.
Now, when you say per.
I don't have a stick shift.
Yeah, you're lucky.
Per signal, though, if you go from four to two and it's not a fifty percent difference, you still, it makes sense.
More fun.
Right?
It, it's a.
You just have one.
Everybody.
I can't remember, the, we didn't, we didn't bid it out. We had a, we had a, the numbers we had were a, um, estimate from just one of the contractors, and then they told me to bid this out. Uh, I can't remember the reason, uh, the street committee, but they, uh, that we talked about, uh, but they told me just to go with four rather than sticking with two.
Yeah, how it do with the TV part of it, wasn't it?
There were, there was something that was disa, there was a disadvantage.
You had to have the TV cameras going both ways.
Yeah. There's, yeah, there was a disadvantage just to have the north-south, and, uh, I just ran with it as, as the street committee told me to go with it, so.
Okay, I guess when you think about it, though, let's think about the order of that. So the street committee met, and the street committee should bring it to council before you go to bid. That's the proper order, don't you think?
We did that, didn't we?
Did we meet, talk about it here at the street committee and tell you how to bid it?
We told, um.
We made a motion to bid it, but we talked about it, maybe.
That's all we did.
We talked about the street committee, but I don't think the street committee came and gave a recommendation.
This is the first I know about it.
Yeah, so I think that the key thing is when you have a committee and you guys decide, you make a recommendation to council, and then we vote, and then we bid.
That's what we did.
I don't remember it, but that doesn't mean that.
Okay.
So anyway, just reiterate that.
This is the first I remember.
And this Jay Warren company, where are they from? Do you know?
Um.
On page sixty-five, do you know where they're from?
One of them said, too, they didn't give.
Yeah, one was Wichita.
It's like Topeka, Topeka, according to the internet, is a nine-hundred dollars.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
That's Topeka? Okay. All right, I was just curious. Interesting letterhead. All right, so the low bid was, uh, the twenty-four, oh, four-five.
Yeah. And these are actually, uh, the low bidders were actually, actually installed the sensor at Twenty Street, the sensors at Twenty Street, so they've done work in various.
Those do seem to be working really well. I mean, I don't think anybody gets trapped there like they used to.
Which one did I miss?
Twenty.
So, you guys wanna proceed coming out of sales tax?
God or spender.
Okay, you could, are you making a motion to accept a low bid?
Who would accept a low bid from Phillips Southern Electric for the four video detection lights on Fourteenth Street and Center?
For the twenty-four-five coming out of sales tax side?
Twenty-four-five out of sales tax side.
Is there a second?
My second.
Is there any further discussion?
When, when would this be going in?
When we get it, I, I don't.
Hopefully before school starts.
Probably before school starts.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll push it. Okay.
Tell them that we might be looking at lights in the future, hand in.
That's illegal, son.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, watching time. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
We sitting out there, crazy.
That was a consent agenda, that's already been over her parents.
Okay, gotcha. He said, was continuing sit there, I thought maybe he had some more to say.
Uh, the fourth item is financials and project updates. Um, let's see, general fund is relatively down, but not lower than, uh, what we had last year, uh, but taking into consideration, uh, that's not in this, it'll come in next month's financials, uh, is that we just had a, uh, pretty decent, uh, property tax, uh, deposit from the county, um, and I think it was, it was up, uh, relative to how much property taxes, uh, slash other motor vehicle taxes that we had last year. Uh, so it should right the ship comparatively.
Our expenses are a little bit high, though, in the general fund, uh, because like we, I know we have the sweeper for a hundred and ninety-five, but our expenses overall are, are up two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, so a hundred and ninety-five of that is the street sweeper. I guess the other seventy-two thousand, I just wondered if you had any concerns.
Um, we've been, so we've budgeted for quite a few items that we don't, uh, we don't normally have hard, uh, at least that I can tell, uh, equipment, uh, like we've been purchasing. We purchased the, uh, crack sealer, we purchased the street sweeper, we purchased mowers, we purchased aerators, an aerator.
As long as, just when I see the expenses being up two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, I know a hundred and ninety-five is, but the other seventy-two, I didn't know.
It, it built on itself, uh, I mean, we.
You're still comfortable with all?
I'm still comfortable, yes. Yeah, it, it's just we've had more upfront purchases, I think, than we've had before.
In the general fund?
In the general fund.
And then on the water revenue, you know, our expenses are up a hundred and thirty-one thousand, so I know thirty thousand of that is M E R, but it's up the other hundred thousand?
Is, um, uh, so we, uh, some of it's preparing for the waterline project. Uh, we've, we've been doing more. Uh, I think we, have we paid for some of those tap stations yet? Okay?
And a hundred meters.
And, uh, and meters, uh, have been coming in. We paid for meters for.
I thought that was in this one.
It might be in this one. I just paid eight thousand dollars in meters.
So.
And I paid a bunch of antennas last, that was the last one.
Yeah, it's, yeah, some of it's stock, some of it's, uh, have we fixed anything? We fixed some stuff on the waterlines.
And bore.
And we had to bore some places, catching up on our meter pits, uh, that are on our list. Uh, so it's, it's expected, I think.
Okay.
And then we, uh, we also, um, switched a, an employee from one to the other, so that also shows up, too.
Okay, and the other ones I, I was concerned about?
Yeah, sewer fund is up, uh, 'cause we moved an employee and we, our expenses have been down. Uh, we did have that forced main break, which hasn't, hasn't showed up yet, uh, but that'll be coming out of, uh, sewer replacement.
Did we contract that out?
Yeah, we, to relieve our crew at ten a.m. that next day, we contracted somebody to finish the job, yes.
Who fixed it?
Larson Construction.
And did it affect anybody?
Uh, no, uh, we didn't, uh, have to shut anybody down. Uh, we diverted it, uh, reported it to K D H E, uh, and.
But it didn't affect anybody's service?
Nope.
Okay, that's good. And Gina, I'm glad you, Gina texted me. I called Austin and said, hey.
It was funny, well, I got your call, and about a minute later Kent called me up, he was already at the shop, uh, and then I got a call from my wife, 'cause she was out of her horse, and, and, uh, going, hey.
Then you got calls.
Yeah, I got a few calls, uh, and, yes, thank you, Gina.
We were just looking for trains. I have a phone number.
I will get you my cell phone number.
We were just down driving by, my son loves trains. And we were driving down to go look at the train.
And I'm sure it smelled nice.
So I'm in South Dakota, and she says, I think we have a water main drink, water leak, and I said, okay, I'll call Austin.
Brown water.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, and just, yeah. Okay, so sewer's fine, and we talked about sales tax, um, and I updated the project costs, uh, as well, to include, uh, the projects that we have been talking about.
But not, not to beat you up, but on page seventy, when I look at that general fund, like some of those dollars spent, none of those are concerns of yours out of the general fund?
Uh, no, 'cause the, the one that pops out is the street, and that was the, um, street sweeper. Um, everything else.
Nothing concerned.
Looks in line, yes, yes. Uh, and we're at forty-one percent, uh, on our general fund, halfway, about halfway through the year, so.
Yeah.
Uh, if, um.
But we have that, we've got the street sweeper out.
Right, we got the street sweeper out. Um, so, as of right now, uh, looking at it, looking at it, I think we're in good shape.
So on this project list, on page seventy-three, now this, on the airport reconstruction, now that should be completed, right?
Oh, yes, yes, it should be, and I didn't update that. Yeah, they, they, uh, they actually sent me an email saying, don't mow that grass just yet, so, uh, yeah, it should be completed.
So that's done, so the, so the clink we're waiting on, the T A project, is that done? Paid and done?
Yeah, it's paid for, I'm waiting, they haven't sent me anything that says that's they finalized, but I got a hint of how their pro, uh, their process goes, and they audit the project before they close it out, so we might not see something.
Not quite, but not closed?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the F A A, is, is that closed?
The.
The airport apron?
I think so, with the, with the final drawdown.
Olson's bill said they, that was a closeout.
Yeah.
The forty-three thousand that we've just paid, right?
Well, the, the part, the three thousand to Olson's on there, they said that's their paperwork.
For the closeout, yeah.
Okay. And then you want to have them put the bids in here for these street projects?
Just in case, yes.
Okay. And the hometown is your estimate number there?
That is my estimate, yes.
Okay. And then that downtown project, that's, you can change the pending to approved?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. You guys have any questions on that? Okay, anything else, Austin?
Um, well, I see Kevin sitting out there. Uh, we have been, I didn't want to leave him hanging.
Kevin, he's, he.
We've been, we've been doing the work, um, and we haven't gotten all the answers back, uh, but for the vaca, the vacating of Eleventh Street and, uh, uh, what's that?
Jackson.
Jackson, uh, as well, um, what's Kate Manley? Hasn't given me a response yet on that portion of it, but, uh, staff and I have been trying to evaluate, uh, the utilities, and the majority of our, my main concern is the utilities that run down that railroad, uh, road, that old.
Right away.
No, it's not right away.
Where the old track is.
Where the old track used to be, um, uh, that goes through all of their properties. Uh, we don't currently have easements through there. Um, and the only thing I can think of to solve that, I mean, minus getting the easements in writing, um, uh, and I'd have to ask this, uh, this guy, the lawyer, uh, about something else, uh, prescripted easements and such, that's just, uh, other things, but I think, I think we should actually, personally, I think we should look into, uh, gating off that, uh, access right there, that road access, uh, to benefit the, both us and, and Kevin and, and his neighbors. Uh, I think that would be a big solution, uh, trying to see if we can gate that off as well as, um, see if we can limit access on the other side without hindering, uh, what, um, Kevin Cromie, uh, does for, in his property as well, his, his field. Um, trying to come up with that solution, I think that would be a best-case scenario. Um, as far as Eleventh Street, uh, we, as far as I can tell, we have a storm sewer that runs down there, um, and, uh, he, I mean, I can understand his issues with, uh, a non-conforming title, as, as best as I can describe it, uh, where his property goes over onto our right away. Uh, and I'd hate to stopgap, just like the last time they brought this up, uh, to just extend it to where we think it, uh, goes, but, um, I, I do have a concern with, with the storm sewer, we don't exactly know where it goes, sort of thing.
So we're still working on it, Kevin?
Yeah.
It's in process.
It's in process, yes.
And, and we'll, and, um, yeah, you have to call to be on the agenda.
I should have called, I'm, I apologize, I should have called you.
I just assumed that we talked about the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to connect with you in the coming week.
Excuse me, if we put in the gates now, will that solve?
That'll be a big solution, as long as people, they, the gates.
And we need big signs.
And big.
And we probably have to make sure we put those on our property and not on other people's property. I can see that happening.
Right.
Okay, so, maybe next meeting?
I'll try.
Okay, maybe. You check with us, Kevin. Okay, and other thing, um, the audit is gonna be here at the next meeting, the auditor.
Yeah.
And, um, there's a draft of the audited financial statements at City Hall, and you are not gonna make copies of it, those for everybody, right?
If, if that's, we just haven't printed it out.
So you can, you, I was just gonna come into City Hall and look at them. Do you guys want your own copies to look before they come? This, so this is what has happened in the past. They come up and they say, I know you've all reviewed these audited financials. That has happened every time I've been there, and, uh, I'm like, no. So this year, we have them, so the question is, do you want a copy of them, or do you just wanna go and look at them at City Hall? It's, it's your call.
I can, I can also send them out via email, 'cause that's how we send them, they send them the same way to all of us.
So do you want them to email it out, so you can take a look at them?
Email, yeah, good.
You guys okay for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, she will, well, actually, Tyler will be here next time.
Yes, Tyler.
Darlene wants a hard copy, please.
Okay, or that's true.
Look at one.
I'm, I'm just gonna go in City Hall.
My computer is old and dying.
Okay, is there, and again, the budget meeting is Wednesday night?
Wednesday night, five fifteen at the library.
Okay, is there anything else?
Uh, I sent these, I didn't send these, I put these on your desk. These are your budgets. I got fairly certain I laved over this thing, uh, to figure out all the numbers, uh, and it's pretty simple. If you have any questions, please contact me. Uh, I wanna answer, I wanna have you fully aware of what's going on. It's, I felt like I did it pretty simply. Uh, first page, uh, first two pages are the capital improvements, uh, for two thousand nineteen, uh, that have been previously outlined. Some of them are brand-new, uh, requests, um, and others are, uh, what previous council have, have been sticking with, uh, so, uh, in our capital improvement plan. Uh, and then after that is a five-year plan, uh, of the projects, uh, that we've talked about, uh, previously in this council and previous councils, uh, about what we're doing and things we need to talk about as far as moving forward with, uh, some of the bigger ticket items. And then after that is the, our budget forms, um, that show line by line how we do the budget, uh, and then after that is the state forms, uh, it shows you how, what I had to enter in, uh, and possibly what our mill levy could be, I think one of these pages shows, but, like I said, you look this, look through this and all your infinite time that I know every, everybody has, uh, and if you have any questions, feel free to call. And if you have any questions, feel free to call. If you want to talk through this whole thing, I'll section out some time for you.
And all of your free time.
And all of my free time, yes.
All right. We will move ahead for our standing committee reports. Street, anybody have anything?
I think the crack ceiling looks like it's going great, man.
I keep reading they're working on it.
Oh, my gosh. Have you seen some of the... How much cracks they've sealed? I don't know how many on your feet, but it's great.
I read it almost every day. Crack seal around, crack seal around.
We are done with the ceiling routes, with the crack ceiling. They did some more of different roads, but they're done for this season because it got too hot. So, no more crack ceiling until the fall, until the fall. So, we are now preparing for patching, which is the next phase of getting ready for chip and seal.
Okay. Water, wastewater, parks and rec. So, I was trying to figure out... Somebody brought up about the swim team. Do we play... So, we used to have our pool manager, used to be the manager of the swim team, so we never had two different groups. But now, we have a swim team and we have our lifeguard positions. Does the swim team not have a WSI-approved... I mean, do we have to provide a lifeguard for swim team practice?
That's what our policy says.
But, that was when Maria was... And it didn't cost us anything out of pocket, so...
I mean, we're welcome to look at it, and we've had that discussion. But, right now, in our swimming pool policy, it says that we will provide a lifeguard for this. So, I mean, that's what we're trying to follow. So, if we want to discuss moving forward with something different...
You guys think we need to have some kind of contract with the swim team since they're two separate entities? I mean, they started out overlapped because of Maria, but now, it's just to make sure we understand each other. And also, it's probably helpful, like, because they give advance during, like, when the pool won't be open to the public because of the swim needs. Just to make sure every communication is good, we might need to have to look into that. I also heard that the grass wasn't growing because our sprinklers don't work.
They are solving that issue, yes.
What are you laughing about?
The kids flush more.
So, we put in new grass and it didn't work. And then, we put sprinklers in and put new grass, and now, it's still...
Right. There's an issue with the sprinklers we're trying to solve.
We'll get that fixed. But, will we have to put grass in for the third time?
Well, I'm trying to make it so we don't have to. We might have to put some more grass seed down, like you would normally do anywhere you're seeding. Overseeding is a standard procedure.
Well, let's try not to duplicate efforts.
No, yeah, and that's all, yeah.
That's a crazy idea. Anybody else got parks and rec?
Have they got the vacuum cleaner fixed for this?
We got filters in for it. I haven't had a chance to see if the filters solved the problem.
I saw that you hired some more lifeguards. So, are we good for pool parties?
They've been scheduling more pool parties, yes.
So, we're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I asked about that, too. I had somebody contact me saying that they had contacted the pool and never heard back. And they were wanting to know if they would be available evenings and weekends.
If they contacted a Marley on the season, they probably got that answer.
You mean a lifeguard, or somebody wanted?
A lifeguard.
A lifeguard. Get me the name, because if their phone didn't work for a while, get me the name. Because she called me again for names. Get me the name.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this morning, I was down in the park, and I walked through the park just to see about the golf course thing, to map it out. And I was talking to some people down there, and then, there was a guy walking his dog down there. I didn't realize you didn't have to have your dog on a leash when they were walking through the park.
Verbal control.
Verbal control.
Verbal control within 50 feet.
Yeah, something like that. 50-something, yeah.
That's a long, 50 feet.
Well, I'd have to look it up, but I might be quoting that.
That's what it said, but I was surprised, because, I mean, when you...
Is it 50?
I think it is 50 feet.
It's 50 feet, yeah.
I have to pull it out, but I think that's what it is.
See, I have one dog at half-deleash, and the other one, he's within, like, maybe five foot. But, I work real hard with it. They don't take off and run and all those.
But, I just figured most people, if you're walking your dog in the park or any place, that you would have your dog on a leash in case.
Well, if you see another dog coming, it's a real good idea, because you don't know the temperament of the other animal.
Right.
My big gripe is now, is, you know, with the poop stations we have with the... Yeah. Now, we have that park right next to the barber shop, and I'm always out there, because I have a puppy, clean it up. But, I know a guy that's not doing that now. What's the procedure?
Don't we have a station out there?
No, we took it out there.
They, from what I understand, they put one there and then took it out, because it was encouraging dogs to... They're encouraging people to take their dogs there. That's my... Whether that's true or not.
Well, at that time, two people up in the apartments, three had dogs, and then, there was other people coming from over it. And it's nice, I mean, you know, but what is it? Is there some... If they don't clean up after them, we don't have...
It's littering. It's littering, I think.
It's not littering, it's actual order.
But, you have to find... You have to catch them.
I can tell you who's doing it, I've seen it.
Can she take pictures and submit those, or like, shame them on Facebook or something?
I don't want to take action shots.
Depending on city property, you are the complainant, does the council, if it's going on. But, I put the station back, and it's hard to complain if you took the station out. I mean, think about it, it's not like grass the city owns, it's public. People want to walk their dogs, they really can. Well, let's make sure we put the station back in, we should try. Give them a chance.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I have my own bags.
I think people are going to do it, whether they... If there's no station, they can say, "Well, where is it?" Yeah.
Well, there are a number of people who use the city lot across from me to take their dogs to potty, and none of them ever have a bag with them.
Well, you can report it, according to what Chief just said.
Well, and you see people up at the cemetery, you know, walking their dogs and theirs.
Okay, keep in mind, we have to catch them doing it.
That's what I just thought. I thought you had said you'd have to catch them.
We have to catch them doing it, unless you want to do DNA. We have to catch them.
Okay. So, you can rethink if you want to put a station there. Anything else? Cemetery and Airport, Police and Fire. I just want to say again that the chief and the police were very helpful at the barbecue to help the people. They, I guess, they went back down at 1:30 in the morning and told them a big storm was coming and helped them tie everything down, so, kudos to our police department.
I would like to say that we're having a reception for Officer Wendell on...
Next Monday.
Next Monday, from 11 to 1. He is retiring.
Here?
Here at City Hall. He is retiring.
11 to 1, so Larry Wendell.
I'll give it to you, Mayor, because we have a time presenting stuff.
Okay. We going to do it at that event?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I want to mention that we had to utilize the police department last week, right across the street and on the other side of the alley. And I want to thank Bob and McPocky for being the cruisers in town. They saw that the house across on the alley was on fire.
From your house?
Yeah, yeah, and...
It wasn't that one that we condemned?
No, that's the one we're taking... No, that's the whole point, it's right in the same lot. And that's why I went and talked to Dave afterwards. I said, "That really scared me, because if that would have lit up..."
It would have burned quick.
It would have burned, and then, there's other neighbors in our next door.
True, true.
And, so, yeah, I was just thrilled. And then, the fire department got there, and got there in time, and fortunately, it would just, you know, for some reason, the corner of the house and the deck, but it was that black plume smoke from the siding. But, they were there, and they were en masse.
Yeah, well, you know, it's really good that, you know, residents keep their eyes open and report stuff. I mean, that, like, the water and now the fire. I mean, we have to encourage residents to do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It was... I was thrilled, you know.
And our fire department, they respond. Praise the Lord. All right, anything else, Police and Fire?
Well, I'm glad that Todd came through with flying colors again with his chase.
Chase. We're glad you're okay, Chief.
Yes. And how is the vehicle?
It's being fixed right now. We actually... Awesome. So, we received a letter from our insurance company, and something we're going to have to address with them, because they didn't want to pay to fix it, because it's an intentional act. Well, it's kind of hard not to do our job without doing intentional acts. But, anyway, the county's paying for it to be fixed. It's being fixed right now. Talked to them today, looking at a couple of weeks, we're still waiting on some of the parts to get in.
You know, that's kind of odd, because EMC is a huge municipal government.
Oh, yeah. The guy was going to call me back, because I talked to him, I was, "I don't know how I'm going to do this. I got to get back with you." Well, I've never heard back from him since.
I got an official letter today.
That's what I said, we got a letter in today, you needed to call me back. So, I'm going, because my question was...
But, county, they approved it. County approved it. Their insurance agents...
Yeah, they paid for it last time as well, during the chase, during jailbreak.
So, do they not have EMC?
No.
Who do they have?
Oh, heck, if you want to ask me, I probably told you. That's another big one, that does a lot of...
Continental Western?
Public Kennedys.
Continental Western?
No, no, it's just a one little word thing like EMC is as well, but I can't remember what it is.
Okay.
But, I'm going, "We're paying you to not cover us." That makes a lot of sense to me.
My first concern was having right at the state line, is that right?
What's that? It's right at the state line.
I mean, is there ever... I mean, insurance companies will pay as little as they can, as late as they can, but, I mean, if you happen to have it at the state line, obviously, I thought, "Oh, they're going to say they won't cover it, because it's in Nebraska."
No, because my first... The one we did last October was actually clear up in Nebraska.
It was in Nebraska, okay. That's where I went.
We're glad you're safe.
Oh, thanks.
Only secondary is a car. We're glad you're safe.
Yeah, so, we've had my...
A much lower secondary.
We got some new issues. We'll be talking to my department about this kind of stuff, since the insurance, until we get that straightened out, we got to change some things that we do, because everything we do is intentional.
Accidental pit maneuvers?
We'll talk about that later.
Thanks, Chief. Admin Finance, oh, that's Darlene's.
Yes.
She's reporting from our committee. Is this different than the one that you have in the past?
Yes, it is.
Is this more readable, or what?
She outlined what we've got.
Yes, and enlarged and...
I got it. Yep. Give it to her.
Is that it? It's just smaller. Handwritten. Mayor, the Bill of the Administration and Finance Committee met on June 1st to discuss incentives for demolition of blighted structures and the building of new housing. Present were Councilmember's boss, Hugh Schroller, Mayor Grun, and City Administrator St. John. We discussed the economic benefits of offering incentives in the older areas of Marysville, where infrastructure of water, sewer, streets, and fire are in place. We propose the following incentives. Up to $1,000 for new construction of a housing structure on empty lots, lot or lots. Up to $2,500 for demolition of blighted structure or structures, leaving empty lots in place. Up to $5,000 for demolition of blighted structures and new build of a housing structure within two years. Okay. Refer to the highlighted map. The targeted areas we talked about that day were Palmetto, Marysville proper, Ballard, and Morals. Afterwards, I stopped at CBS, and we could not read the small print on many of the editions. So, I had them fill in the handwritten printed editions. And I would like to add the following also to the map. Yossi, Wheeler, Ungar, Wasenberg, Parsons, Redman, and Stewart additions. And what we have highlighted shows those additions. Any other additions would be parcel by parcel upon review. And I understand that the correct city budget has $8,000 available for demolition? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the last city demolition occurred in 2013.
So, our point was, remember when Nick Stoll came up and he said, "Can you waive the building permit?" And we said, "Well, we don't really want to start waiving building permits, but we do want to encourage development in areas that maybe already have the infrastructure, the streets are curbed together, the water sewer, and especially in the areas that haven't been renovated lately." So, we're... And so, we were trying to figure out... And the reason why we came up with the $1,000 was, you have the water and sewer hookups and all those kind of things. So, if we decided to just make a flat amount, it wouldn't be tied to anything other than a credit of this from the city for all the water sewer and building permit things.
You're saying that's for sewer taps, water taps, and...
Well, a limit of $1,000, just 1,000. And we'd probably make it so that it would be a reimbursement to them. They would pay everything, and we would reverse up to 1,000. If theirs happened to come in less than 1,000, we would... But, it would be up to 1,000 reimbursement. And so, that was our first step. And then, the second step was, okay, we want to encourage demolition. So, we said, "Okay, we'll give them a certain amount, we'll give them a certain amount to help with the demolition." So, that was the 2,500. And then, if they rebuild, we said, "Okay, we'll give you up to 20, or up to 5,000. If you rebuild within two years with a structure of 45,000," I don't think you include that.
Oh, no, I did.
"At a structure of 45,000 or more." In other words, if they just put a shed, that's not going to do it. But, if they put a building that's going to be on the tax rolls, we could justify giving them $5,000 to improve that area. So, those were the three points that we kind of came up with. What, I mean, and then, the next step is to discuss where. But, let's discuss first the first three incentives that we talked about. How do you guys feel about those?
I was always so impressed with Seneca, where if you drive around there, you'll notice in the core part of town, structures, older dilapidated structures were tore down, and then, a nice, usually brick, house, and sometimes a duplex was put in that place.
I think it's, I mean, a good goal. I don't know, it just doesn't sound too bad to me. My biggest fear would be we would end up losing out on affordable housing. I mean, we do want to keep some stock of affordable housing in town and...
Well, there'll be the people that don't want to tear it down.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, and just want to rent it out.
Right.
But, this is really to give, especially the empty lot, you know, the people that have empty lots, this would encourage them to build something on it, $1,000. And if they tear it down and put a better structure, we thought that was a good thing. And we want to be encouraged to people to tear down those dilapidated structures.
Well, yeah, there are definitely places that could be used torn down.
And it would help that particular lot or lots and improve the neighborhood.
Well, I just, when you brought up Seneca, I worried. I mean, I know enough people from Seneca, I think there's a concerted effort to keep housing prices a little buoyed and keep a certain element out of town, and that's why they have trouble importing a workforce to places like Coat Cabinet Tree and things. It looks very nice, but, I mean, I don't know if you've noticed, the housing market in Seneca is insane compared to here, it's outrageous. But, I mean, it does look nice, you're right. I mean, that's the trade-off.
Well, so, it was just an incentive to improve lots.
Sure.
Do you guys see any faults in those three steps for the city?
I have a question. When you get ready to build now, like, on my corner lot, it's a small lot, and they would never let it... They... And Dave told me, they would never let me build on a lot that small. You have to have, is it two lots now to build on?
Because if you're on a corner, you're set back more.
Setbacks from two ways.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of places you're not going to build.
And you're probably set back off the alley, too, aren't you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Really? Which is fine, you're still going to get rid of some stuff.
So, you have the people, like, if you do, like, a remodel, you know, they still have the neighborhood revitalization in place. That would be for the people who do additions, you know. This is kind of a different...
This has to be an entirely new structure?
Yeah, we were trying to identify.
If all of them is available, at that time that they own, is a small lot like mine, If all of it is available at that time that they own, is a small lot like mine, they're not going to be allowed to build a new structure on it because it doesn't have that extra square footage to it.
So if you add a big garage to an existing house because you bought the lot beside you and tore down whatever's beside it?
Well, then-
Then, then, does that count as a new structure if you connect it to your house or is it not? I mean, I'm asking because we're going to get asked these questions.
Yeah.
Because they're going to say, look, I want to buy this house beside me. It's a mess. Okay, I bought it. It now connects to my property. That means I can build on it. Okay, it's connecting to my house. Is that considered a new structure or not? Or I remodeled my garage to be twice as big?
Well, I guess, I think it goes back, we hit the $45,000 number.
It goes to the $45,000.
If you add on to your house, equivalent to $45,000.
Okay, that's, okay.
That's why we kind of threw that number up, to justify giving those monies and the tax revenues back to the city.
Okay, that's good. I just, we just need a base, a line, so we know.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. But my point was that we were specifically told that, you know, we had to build on, it's just how much they're going to allow you to put on that square footage of building.
You're saying if you bought a corner lot and you tore the house down, would you be able to build back on that with the new-
But even what Nick Stoll's building is this much. Because I asked about taking one to Alma.
Really?
Yeah, it's this much. It's more than this much. By the time you do concrete, it's quite a bit more than this. So you can get a house that size, the size that he's building, the small houses is that much or more.
Okay. Got it.
So you guys want to proceed with drafting up something?
Well, you know, something I, and it's a zoning problem, and every time I bring it up, I get shouted down by Kevin and some of the other folks in his neck of the woods. But there's a lot of lots that I don't know will ever see a house, and I'd just assume see a nice building following the rules be built on that's on the tax rolls. Kevin, you disagree?
You still talking about garages on a lot?
Garages or buildings, if it's, I mean, to me, you set up the rules, and if they fall inside the rules and they're on the tax roll, that's a win because it's fallow. But that's just, I mean, people say, well, would you want it beside your house? And I thought, well, if it's set back far enough and it's not a drug house, yes, that's what I would prefer next door to my house. I'm not saying that you would necessarily have that, but, you know, I think there's a lot worse things in a well-kept building that's not, you know, I guess, grinding and welding at 2:00 AM or whatever. There's a lot of caveats, but-
Then that's the well-kept building with not junk outside.
Well, that's the thing. And that's, a building that follows all the rules, the ordinances we have in place shouldn't present a problem to my eye that way. And that would put things on the tax rolls, let people take advantage of this, and use fallow ground. I just, this is like the fourth, fifth time I've brought it up in eight years. And every time, it's like, well, you start cracking into the codes, and then it starts to become, where do you end? Which I get. But to me, I mean, if you're going to pursue trying to infill develop, that would be great. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, well, this is our-
I mean, I'd love to have houses, but if we can't have a house, then this is the next best.
Yeah, well, this is to encourage, well, we could use this as the first step, see what happens in the next five years, and then say, well, now maybe we didn't get any development in that area. Maybe we need to consider-
Pre-examiner options.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Now, when we initially talked about this, Darlene added to our initial, when we had our meeting, I've seen Darlene had, has included more areas. We initially said Palmetto, Marysville proper, and Ballard and Morals.
We couldn't read the other, to begin with, couldn't read the names of the other additions.
Well, I think, if I remember the conversation right, we were trying to include a large area and then go, use everything else as a per-case basis. And if we started going this little piece, this little piece, this little piece, why not just do the whole thing then?
Yeah. See, we initially thought, like, that North Street would be our dividing line, and then we said any, and probably 16th Street. Wasn't that what we decided initially? Yeah, 16th Street and North Street. And then we said, well, if someone approaches us and, let's say, they live in the Wheeler Edition, and it's a, that we could do it per minute of review.
Yeah.
But we could do it as an exception basis. But our whole point was to kind of work with this core area and encourage-
This area up here really ought to be in our core area.
But that was our decision when we started.
Well, yes.
To do these three. That's what we agreed on.
We couldn't, we couldn't-
Well, that was our decision when we started.
Well, that's what we talked about. And I said, this was my, that I would like them cleaned.
Well, I realized that.
After, you know, driving around and-
And as part of being, parts of Ward Four, that Berkeley Heights Edition, I would say, I'm not, now I'm just going to keep pushing the boundary, but that Berkeley Heights Edition probably, to me, could be considered as well. There's some structures in there that either have been recently or whatever. I know now it's where's the slippery slope, but that's below the water tower there.
But yeah, but then you're, some of those are really nice areas.
Yeah, well, yes, that's true.
Well, that's why I was staying more.
I know, it's tough.
I had a reason for doing that. And somebody, if you stay to where we initially proposed, you kind of have a square, and then you do as, you know, if somebody, if somebody knows we have this in place and they're going to do it, they're going to come and ask for it, whether they're in the square or not.
You're right.
And your house is not in the square.
No.
Almost, just outside the square.
Mine is.
It's, no, on 16th, oh, yours is, okay. Anyway, it's not whose is, it's our point.
Oh, that's the whole Palmetto addition.
I mean, I guess, what's the argument against making it all subject to review? Just to make it simpler to automatically accept in this area?
I think-
Prevent discrimination.
I think that, you know, we wanted, we wanted to work on the core section of town. That's why it was brought up, right? Was because he was building in an area that no one else will build in, and we wanted to encourage that development. And that's kind of the reason for doing this, is to encourage development in areas that not very many people are willing to make that investment.
That already have water, sewer-
And streets.
And streets, yeah.
Yeah, if you're going to make it simpler, I mean, sorry, Darlene, but yeah, keeping it at North Street and 16th Street, I mean, if you just-
It's square.
That's really clean, and then have it-
It is clean, but there's-
That's all right. Let's just stick with Ballard and Morals and Marysville proper and Palmetto and leave it at that, and then we can decide where-
And then the others are case-by-case basis. As you come, you can bring it to the committee or the council and request if you're beyond those borders. But I think it focuses on the area we want redevelopment in. So should we proceed and draft something up?
I think-
Make a more formal proposal?
I think that's the simplest.
Is there a consensus of council to do that?
Yes.
Okay. With the three, even the three areas?
No one wants more than three.
I think you need to keep it, you want a focal point. That's our focal point.
Since we don't have consensus, do you want a motion?
Okay.
I move, we move forward with-
The incentives.
With drafting an incentive program for Palmetto Edition, Marysville proper, and Ballard and Morals Edition for infill development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven, one. Did you vote?
Make mine with Terry.
No.
Six, two. I don't know if you can do that, but okay. All right. Well, I think, I think it addresses some of our improvements. I think it gives people incentive, right? Okay. Next item is appointments on page 75, the municipal judge, Ken Lamro, for a year April 2019 to April, I'm sorry, 2018 and 2019, and the tree board recudne has agreed to serve on for the three-year term. I would entertain a motion?
Move to approve the mayor's appointments, municipal judge and tree board.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Okay. City attorney is not here. We do need to have an executive session, just for about 10 minutes. I have a motion here, if somebody wants to read it. It's to discuss non-elected personnel on, for employee review, actually, and it can include us plus Austin, the governing body plus Austin. Does somebody want to read this? That's what happens when you're close by. Kevin said he would.
Kevin wanted me.
No.
All right. I move the city council recessive executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters, exception KS 75 4319B1. In order to discuss performance matter involving a city employee to open meeting to resume, city council chamber at, let's go, 10:10, executive session will include the governing body and Austin St. John, city administrator.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here we go.
Have a party?
Oh, okay, okay.
They usually are.
Thank you.
Wow. I left her in protective custody with the husband.
That was probably your biggest miss.
No, actually, what he does is, he takes him out in the garage, the doors are shut, and he just throws treats at him.
Oh, so there you go.
I guess I'm going to have to sit, no, I'm going to have to sit on my chair to get it down. It's up so high, I can't, I can't get it down. I have to sit on it, so it sinks.
You mean, after you sit on it, it starts to go down?
Yeah, well, I've got it up so-
It loses pressure? Not while you're sitting on it, though?
No, I've got it up so high so I can see, so I can put my elbows up here because it's so, mine's, I'm short, and so I got it up high, but if it comes clear-
Oh, well, the first one was, we all was in South Dakota, and then I had to get leave for a ride at 4:00 in the morning, and then ride 21 hours, and then you're kind of wired.
So where were you at in South Dakota?
I was in South Dakota.
I heard you were in South Dakota, Black Hills.
I was too. Where at?
I was in, we stayed in Lee, but we were all over. We were in Spearfish and-
You were in Sturgis?
We were only briefly. We didn't really spend much time there. We were mostly in Lee, deadly.
We were in Deadwood, too.
You know what's funny is, there were like a bunch of other people up in Deadwood at the same time. I was amazed how many people. A friend of mine does radio announcing. He was there. I hadn't seen him since I was in high school.
Did you run into him?
Yeah.
Oh, you saw him?
Yeah.
Did you see us in Deadwood?
Did you win anything?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm boring.
Politics in your trails, huh?
I, we took the bus tour, though. That's the first time we've done that, and that was kind of cool.
I love to travel in the back. And there's so much, like, kind of hidden, lots of big, little bars and things, and lots of good water, something like that.
Exactly. We've been there, done that.
Well, see, when we went, before, we just rode. But this time, we actually did some of the history stuff.
Yeah. Well, there's just a lot to do. I mean, we didn't even get really out of the northern hills.
Across the alley south.
Well, I saw, I saw, I saw the bike trail, and I only saw, we only saw one bike on there. It's a tandem.
Oh, Mickelson? Oh, I saw a cougar. I almost hit a cougar. Mickelson Trail.
Uh-oh. Don't tell Ryan. He's going to be jealous.
You know, I was kind of scared. He jumped, she jumped off the trail, and I'm kind of scared. It kind of scrapes around and gets me up on the sky.
Oh, that's true.
I would have made a great news article, Yahoo or whatever.
Yeah.
You'd buy a cougar.
No more legs. Todd only has one leg.
I was, I was the last rider in. I was the last rider in. It's 21 hours. I made the cutoff by 21.
Weren't you scared being the last rider?
13,000, 500 feet of climb.
Was it dark?
Yeah, yeah. It was 2:30, well, 2:05 in the morning when I finished. I was running since 5:00.
Out there in the dark.
Yeah.
What do you think of that?
I also know a lot of music.
Call this moving back to order. No binding decisions were made during executive session, and now we will continue with the regular session. So moving on to roundtable, I have a couple things. First, I want to thank you for the speakers, Dennis Mason, Greg Boss, Kenny Kane, Wayne Carroll, Scott Sluppianic, and Ken from Concordia, and all our city workers because of speaker's work. Praise the Lord, I think everybody was happy. It was a long project, but thank you for spearheading it, Dennis Mason and-
A number of other people who-
And a number of other people that made it work. Okay. Besides our city guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then also, our city was blessed with a successful barbecue and car show and Jolly Jogathon. So we had a very big, successful weekend last weekend. And one further thing is, I would like permission to attend the MTI training on personnel management. It is on June 29th at Emporia. It's a Friday. Are you guys okay with me going to the MTI training? Yes, yes, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I will do, I will sign up for that, or ask Debbie to sign me up for it. And all it is, is just using the car and my time. And lastly, the, regarding the audited financial statements, when I was at the last training in April, they said that there's a Gatsby 77, Government Accounting Standard Board's Reporting Principle Number 77, that was requiring people to give the details of the tax abatements, the economic tax abatements, in their financial statements. Then we talked to our auditor, and he said that it's not required on the cash basis that we use, but it is required on GAAP, General Recorded Accounting Principles. And so that's why we have not recorded in the past. However, I talked to the admin committee, and they thought it was a good idea to go ahead and have that disclosure made. And the way I look at it is, so often, people think that we are not, we are not doing everything possible, what other cities are doing, to encourage economic development in our city. And by having that disclosure, it shows the extent of it. It would show economic tax benefits as well as neighborhood revitalization in the footmood, to show how many tax incentives we give out, so people know that we are giving abatements out there.
Getting people to-
Yes.
Yes.
So are you, are you guys in agreement, that, Finance and Admin Board was in agreement, right, that we should disclose it?
Yes.
And is the council in agreement that that would be positive for our city?
But how would we, how do you want to do this? Do you want a flyer?
No, it'd just be a footnote in the financial statements. It'd be a footnote disclosure in the financial statements.
Okay.
Will it affect the audit price?
I don't think so.
Will it change that?
I don't think so. It's just one footnote, but I think-
He has to research it to do it.
Well, I believe he already has the majority of the information, right, Austin?
I think he has the county. But the devil's advocate, he would be doing something above and beyond what is required. I don't know whether he's going, he would charge us more or not. I'm just saying, it's not required for our audit. I don't know.
But I just think from a financial disclosure standpoint, more is better, and to show how we are making efforts to encourage economic development in our city.
And it's good information for the council to know as well as-
For us to know, true. So would anyone make a motion to go ahead and have that disclosure made in the financial statements?
I move that we have the disclosure for the financial statements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There you go. Okay, so we'll get that information to the auditor, and it'll just be a footnote. But I think it's important for people to realize, so many times, people say, well, are you doing this, or doing this? And my answer, every time we've sat in that training, the answer is, we do that, we do that, we do that. And this shows that we do that, as well as the new thing we're going to implement is another step that we're kind of going above and beyond other cities by creating this for our citizens. Okay, enough for me. Darlene?
Oh, I'm wearing my stars and stripes tonight because June 14th is Flag Day.
Oh, June 14th.
And the flags is-
Do we do anything for Flag Day?
Thursday. Fly the, fly the flags.
We fly the flags, but do we do anything? I don't think we do anything. Okay. But thank you for wearing your stars and stripes. Anything else?
No.
Bobby?
No.
Gina?
No.
Terry?
You covered what I was going to say about taking care of that speaker system downtown and doing it efficiently. I thought that was nice.
That was a nice letter that Dennis Mason wrote in the information packet to let us know who all was involved. Todd?
That's a good point. Dennis Mason did a great job, really helped out the city there.
And volunteer.
I know, he does.
We need to point that out.
It is a lot.
We take our volunteers for granted sometimes.
Correct. Just a couple things. City of Marysville has a pretty good reputation amongst people who know it exists. It's been my experience when I was up in South Dakota with a lot of other bicycle riders and people, and started talking about where I was from and, you know, where we rode. And I said, Marysville, Kansas? And they're, yeah, it's kind of Manhattan or Lincoln. I'm like, yeah, yeah, it's in between. And it's kind of got a reputation. Like, yeah, it seems like the only real place between Manhattan and Lincoln where there's fun stuff to do. And I'm like, good reputation.
Yeah, we're far enough away, but good at what we do.
Right. And people, and people who haven't been here, they've heard of it.
Yeah.
So it's-
We have a good reputation statewide in Marysville.
Indeed. I think we're kind of placed well for that, so I thought that was really cool. Also, not a political statement, but I hope, you know, Marysville residents will follow the county commissioner race. It's not a city election year, but I think this will be a chance. We're going to have a new commissioner to represent the city of Marysville.
To represent the city, which is very important.
It is very important, and it'll be kind of a restart of, I think, relations between the city and the county commission, who knows how it'll change.
It can only help, hope.
It can, it can only, you know, we can only wait and see, but I hope people stay involved and pay attention to that, because, you know, when you live in Marysville, you're represented by the commission and the city council, so it's important to pay attention to that, too, and hopefully we can work together.
Amen, I agree.
That's all good.
Diane?
Well, I visited with a couple guys that were camping down in the park today, and they said they come by through here every so often. I think the one guy is why maybe passed away, and they, they traveled, and they said they loved Marysville, especially the free parking in our park, but they had a big old RV, and so, and they think it's a great place to stop through, so...
You know, speaking of that, why don't we have a donation thing? Not a required donation, but why don't we have a box there, so if people want to make a donation, I know that they have to come down to city hall right now, can't we cement in a metal box that people can make any donation they want?
Bolt it to the bathhouses, or something.
But the bathrooms, you can do it.
You can just flag it in.
Yeah.
But that way, I mean, I think, like, when we can, we spend $45 a night.
Oh, yeah.
And so you think, if, even if they throw money in, you know, can, can we get a tat, like, some kind of metal attached to the, that they can?
This has been a conversation, we've been, uh, thinking about this, going back and forth on it, whether, or not to put a donation box down there, um, whether it would be prime, uh, target for kids.
Well, see, the key thing is, that the guys have to go down there, and they have to lock up the bathroom, I mean, the bathrooms anyway, so they could check the box when they go.
Yeah, but that didn't, that, that hasn't stopped, uh, certain kids, or adults, or whoever, from vandalizing and doing other things, so, uh, and we can't guarantee that